Okay, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, November the 5th, 2019. Please be reminded that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustee Carter Tao, would you please lead us into the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship, please?
If you join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, you fashion each of us in your divine image and likeness to live in the communion you share as Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Be with us as we reflect and pray this evening for those who have sacrificed and suffered the horrors of war. May this gathering and through all of our thoughts, prayers, and actions help move this world ever closer to the peace of your kingdom. We make this prayer to you through Jesus Christ, the Prince of Peace in our Lord, amen. Amen. And Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. November is Indigenous Awareness Month. In recognition of this, today we will honor the land and territory. Halton, as we now know it, is rich in the history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the lands of the Anishinaabe, to the Ottawa Darwin, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these three lands, our Catholic social teachings call us in solidarity with our Indigenous brothers and sisters to honor and respect the four directions, lands, waters, plants, animals, and ancestors that walk before us. All these wonderful elements of creation exist gifted to us by our Creator God. We acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for being stewards of this traditional territory. Our new national anthem will be sung in English, French, and Anishinaabe.
I want to acknowledge Erin and Vincent Yantomasia on the phone as well. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Erin, Superintendent.
I'm doing well. That's under.
We have to go back in camera, so there were no motions adopted in camera. And there was... Yeah, we didn't get to the information received, so we'll have to skip that as well. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Trustee Murphy. Second, Trustee Duarte.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a notice of motion, please.
Okay.
Would be called Budget.
Thank you. So the notice of motion will be included later on in the agenda?
And budget?
So, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Trustee Murphy, Trustee Duarte, all in favor? Motion carries. Declaration of Conflict. There are no declarations of conflict. We have three presentations this evening. 4.1, Human Rights and Equity. S. Jaya Raman.
So I'll do a quick introduction for people who don't know. Cida Jaya Raman is our Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity. She's going to talk a little bit about her role so far since she's been with the Board. She just passed her one-year anniversary and some plans going forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about the work of equity and inclusion at our Board. So I'd like to begin by saying that when we talk about equity and inclusion and what that means in education, it's really tied very closely to the three main pillars of what we stand for at this Board, that is to support all students and staff to achieve, believe, and belong. The notion of equity and inclusion is to make sure that we create learning environments that are inclusive of all students and staff, where students and staff feel respected, welcome, included, and have a sense of belonging. And when students and staff have a sense of belonging, that leads to then achievement and believing, and for students and staff to be able to thrive. So the work is really connected to the core pillars of the Board. We've been doing a number of different initiatives, and I want to just highlight four key themes today. So a big focus of what we've been doing is to do capacity building or training. So look at how do we, as a Board, create a shared understanding when we talk about equity and inclusion? Because these have almost become buzzwords, diversity, equity, inclusion. But do we, as a Board, really understand what that means as we move towards the common goal of achieving inclusion for all students? Our focus has also been on understanding human rights, because equity and inclusion begins with understanding our rights and responsibilities under the Human Rights Code. In the past year, we've offered over 30 sessions to diverse stakeholders within the Board that includes new teachers, subject council, department heads for principal qualification programs, and teachers, so a variety of different groups. And we've been able to reach over 550 staff through these sessions, and also over 150 students in the past year. The second key theme that I want to talk about was how we provide support to schools. So as schools are again trying to proactively create learning spaces that are inclusive of all students, often we're asked to navigate conversations with parents, or look at how do we make our curriculum inclusive? How do we invite guest speakers who are reflective of the communities that we serve? How do we make these environments such that students and staff feel that they belong and that they can feel safe? The third pillar that I want to talk about was how we've focused on looking at how do we create institutional systems? So the way the Board functions, that's really equitable, so that equity does not become siloed piece of work that happens on its own, but that it's connected to the way the Board functions in all its operations. So the most recent work that I wanted to talk about is embedding an equity lens in the school improvement planning, so that when every school looks at how they can improve their school, and when they think about their theory or problem of practice, they can really have that equity lens. And what that means is that we intentionally think about who are those students who are not experiencing the same achievement and who are experiencing gaps in achievement, and how do we then focus on those students to make sure that every student can really thrive? The fourth one that I really wanted to focus on today is the culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy project that we recently started at the Board. So last year, in January, four of our Board team, and some of them are here today, Superintendent Perkasson, Carmen Condo with Settlement Multicultural Services, Sherri Sabal with Indigenous Advisor, as well as Jaclyn Davis, had gone to Toronto to do some intense learning on culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy, to look at how do we proactively build that into our schools. And all nine of our secondary schools participated in the initiative. We've got some funding, and we were able to look at how do we then take those learnings and implement that in the schools. So we were able to document those three days of learning and the experiences of the participants. We have 35 participants from nine schools, and I'd like to share that with you. It's about, just about seven minutes video that really speaks to what happened during those three days and how it's impacted.
One of the things that's been clear in work we've done is part of it's about being uncomfortable and to have some really hard and meaningful conversations. I've heard that time and time again with our teachers. And while it is difficult and challenging to do, it's the work that needs to be done in order for the best support of all persons. I think to be a critically conscious educator, a lot of it's really based on reflection, based on our own upbringing, our own backgrounds, where we see ourselves in the world. But it also critical means, in fact, to question someone's mindset, why were the positions worth it? And to really think about what advantages we may have had in terms of our upbringing, our opportunities, and to make sure that those advantages are for us. I think it's an ongoing process. It can be a difficult process, but again, I think it's something that's just a serious work.
Culturally responsive and positive pedagogy is about creating the framework positions within the Board, within schools and classrooms, that enable students to thrive and achieve potential. It's about building inclusive curriculum, it's about building inclusive learning environments, where students can see themselves and their experiences and their identities reflected in every aspect of the sport. So it's about changing the conditions within which students learn. It goes beyond the notion of building resilience in our students, to looking at how do we create the correct conditions within which our students can enjoy and achieve that potential.
We agree to our citizens, and it's not just the soft stuff in terms of, well, this person's going to be a neighbor, a friend, and a mother or father to our kids, but it also has its influence on student success. Let me tell you, in schools where a hierarchy has been kind of worked, equatorial schools were enough. The benefit of young people having a sense of belonging to an institution gives them a self-help in all, in all sorts of directions. There's a collective desire among our teachers to make things better. And I think that the value of a hierarchy is that it works to organize and focus that effort with teachers at its core.
Especially in education, and I do work in education, we'll take those questions, you know, why? Why do nations include Indigenous education now? There's no time that we create the safe place for Indigenous forces and people. This is the land that we go on. We can't go back anywhere. We can't overlearn our culture anymore. And I want people to understand that everybody in Canada, across Indigenous people, are immigrants in this country. But yet, we'll be so quick to judge new immigrants that come to our country. And what is Canada? What is Canada coming on there? Very, very rare country of inclusion and equity. But that era came from across the pond. That was already here. Equity and inclusion were already hardly not called about. But we certainly welcome everybody that came here. Education is the key to, almost no other key. When we know all of these critical thinkers and critical learners, we'll become better citizens, and we'll become conscious citizens.
The needs of our racially students are different than our students who are non-racialized, because their lived experience is different. Their reality is different. Everything that they need needs to be addressed. We need to go beyond our hostile values and our passive social teachings to go deeper and understand, to address every student's needs and learn everything.
I'd like them to very intentionally open themselves up to having this conversation. So be open to being shown that they're racist. So the next time a student, a parent, whatever raises racism in their mix or relations with them, that they would respond with openness and wonder and curiosity and invitation for more, rather than shut it down one per minute, because I reckon that's a tactical thing I think to do.
Getting this right is about being a best-in-class teacher. This is excellent practice. This is what it is. This is what leadership is. Equity is a leadership competency. It's not an extra. It's not like, oh, okay, you can just do that, that's great. No, this is a leadership competency, and it needs to be as normal. It needs to be treated as such, and it needs to be valued.
We are re-envisioning what it means to educate, because education, public education, as a colonial institution, serves a particular purpose in maintaining inequities in society. And so what is it that we want for the future for our young people? Do we want to continue to replicate these equity? Or do we want to create a different and better society and ensuring that our young people are able to participate fully, fairly, and equally? We cannot do things the same way and expect different results. We have to think and reimagine something different.
For my selfish takeaway is recognizing just how much systemic racism is out there. I always, I heard, and I think kind of academically knew that it, but to actually hear some of the lived experiences and have an opportunity, and maybe to actually dialogue about that with a huge, the workshop really presented an opportunity for awareness, heightened awareness for folks to say, let's help them have a look at this. This is a real issue. And it's not okay to say that this doesn't happen. I don't have very many minorities in my school, so therefore, I thought this is a lot of issue for us. It was a huge predominant issue that we need to work on, and just bring more awareness to it.
I need more learning. The three-day workshop was amazing, and I was uncomfortable, and at the end of it, I was exhausted, because it was just so much to try to process. And I'm still processing it. It never left me. I can't, I'm totally seeing the world in a new way. I would really, really like that opportunity to further that dialogue. I think it works on that.
Every student, regardless of race or background or culture, has a lived experience that deserves an easier. And we, as teachers, as educators, need to provide those students with that opportunity to share.
I need to make sure that I'm providing my students with this knowledge, and they need to be critically conscious too, in their everyday life, to kind of make sure that these are amazing or good decisions, and they're equitable, as long as you're ever in that situation. And I also, it also taught me to kind of be reflective in terms of my own presence and my role as well as a teacher. And I also feel even more empowered to ensure that I include a more culturally relative ideology into my lessons as well, because I want to make sure that my kids who are coming in here, who have lived experiences and backgrounds, they see themselves in the work that they're doing in the classroom. I might feel like that's a lot of pressure, and that's a lot of responsibility on me. At the end of the day, I'm a teacher, and I'm here to serve my students.
Well, I hope that provided a little bit of a background to the work that we've been doing so far. I wanted to leave you with sort of an image of where we are moving as a Board. Many of you may be familiar with the image, so when we talk about equity and inclusion, it's not about treating everybody the same, because equality does not lead to equal outcomes. So every student and staff cannot achieve and thrive if we only treat everybody equally. It's really moving towards equity and justice, where we then look at what are some of the systemic barriers? How can we address those? How can we dismantle those? And how can we support every student to achieve, believe, and belong? So that's the journey we're on. And to expand this work, we'd like to strike an actually inclusive education steering committee to move the work forward and expand. So I hope there'll be interest in that, and we can move the work with that. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to share.
Superintendent.
Yes, through you.
Thank you very much. That was an amazing video, well done by our director, and everyone else that participated. And I'm really encouraged by the work that you're doing. And I just had a question. In some of the framework of what you're doing, and I understand that it's culturally based right now, and that's the focus, but are you also looking to include other differences? And looking at kids with disabilities? You know, we're having those conversations about lived experiences, acceptance, equity in the classrooms, looking at curriculum, those sorts of things. And I understand the focus of this was on that. But I see that as being part and parcel. So is there an opportunity for you to include that as part of that? Is that a separate approach? What does that look like?
So, absolutely, that is part of that as well. As you mentioned, this particular project was looking at understanding the lived experiences of our racially students, but special needs is definitely an equity issue, and will be part of that as we move forward. So yes, it's not, I don't see that as separate. And I've been having conversations with Superintendent Cipriano and talked about how we can mesh the issues and address it in a more comprehensive manner.
Correct, thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Good presentation as far as the demographics of students is changing and shifting, the population's shifting. We are doing a good job with the curriculum so far. My question would be addressed to Director Daley, and this is regarding the policies. We have a policy on equity. Besides that, we have a host of other policies. Is there a plan to start taking a look at each and every policy that exists, and make sure that we have equity built into each of those policies?
Thanks for the question, and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, our focus for the first year has really been on the experience for our teachers and for our students in the classroom. But certainly part of the mandate of the Human Rights and Equity work is to look at some of those more institutional elements as well, so in terms of policies and procedures, yes?
Yeah, just a side note. A bit of a focus this year with schools, it has been around human rights in particular. Steve mentioned some of her work with schools has been around questions that have come up from parents around specific issues, or maybe events that have happened at schools. So she's done some work with staff. Quite honestly, hopefully that'll help us mitigate the problems before they go further than they need to.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, it was an excellent presentation. I found Director Daley's voice very soothing. Maybe he can do some audio books, and I can fall asleep with those, but they're a great job. I was just wondering, from the student's perspective, is there mechanisms in place now where those who feel they are excluded or have experienced inequity, that their voice can be heard?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Is that, we actually, we were at a PA, in February, every year, the PA Day in February is dedicated to equity and inclusion. Today, we had our planning session, and student voice came up as a big focus for how do we incorporate that? So many schools have talked about intentionally seeking out student voice to say, what are the experiences of our students? How can educators really listen to that, in order to be able to respond to that? And as they look at curriculum, or guest speakers, or events that are organized for the school, how do we center those voices, amplify those voices, so that really it's in response to what our students are telling us? So that's absolutely a focus. Thank you for that.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Wonderful presentation, question. Who will be on this committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the way we've thought about it is that it should have representation from a wide, you know, spectrum across the Board, so it could be, you know, Director Daley would be on that. We were hoping to have representation from trustees, including student trustees, some superintendents such as Cipriano, as well as Anna Perkasson, and then have our Settlement and Multicultural Services Coordinator, so teachers, principals, so a wide spectrum, as well as our Chief of Mental Health and Chief of Social Work to have, that we can bring in diverse voices into that, and really make it a Board-wide response, so that, again, equity doesn't get siloed to one position or one part of the Board. So as wide as possible as representation.
Thank you.
Just for trustees, I did send a draft steering committee to trustees yesterday with some suggestions around what the membership might be.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Superintendent Perkasson, can you introduce the presentation on the Math Action Plan, please?
Thanks very much. I have the privilege of introducing two of our consultants, our master teachers, Jackie Mickle, who's our math lead, and Melissa Carnellos, who is our acting curriculum coordinator. We're here this evening to talk about our Math Action Plan, as well as math initiatives in elementary and secondary. So I'll turn your work, first of all, to Jackie, who's going to lead us through the elementary portion.
Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Hopefully, it's, no, it's, thank you. It's not touching. I would have been here all night doing that, okay. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the Math Action Plan. I'm just going to start by going back four years when the Renew Math Strategy initially came out. This is one of the graphics that was given to Boards with the idea that this would be part of the focus. And this is the pedagogical system. I'm not going to spend too much time talking about this, but there's so many key elements to this system that play into our current Math Action Plan. Central to it, though, is that in order for kids to succeed in math, we need to create a non-threatening environment. And so how do we do that, where kids feel that they are capable to succeed? They see math as a sense-making subject that they are able to engage in and understand. Classroom discourse, where it's more dialogue between teacher and student versus monologue at the front of the classroom. The tasks are worthwhile, that students at all levels can engage in, and teachers know the next steps they need to provide for those students so that they can feel capable. And obviously, tools and representations, which is new to a lot of us, because it's very different than the math that we grew up engaging in. So our focus is taking all of those key concepts into consideration. And what we want to do with our Math Action Plan, and I'll explain that in a little bit more detail, is provide opportunities for all kids to understand procedurally and conceptually what they're doing, and a real focus on conceptual understanding. That means kids understand what they're doing and why. Understanding that all students, sorry, making sure that all students have a strong understanding of the fundamentals of math. With the new government that's come in the last two years, fundamentals of math have been a bigger focus, and so we can unpack that a little bit later on. Making sure that kids understand how to represent their thinking beyond just the standard algorithm, and implementing tasks that can be approached in multiplicative ways, so that kids don't see math as one way to the right answer. So these are all four key elements that are outlined in the Math Action Plan. And this just is a graphic that shows how all the projects that we have at the different levels align, and we really do see a through line between all the projects. And the thing that we're going after with everything is reasoning and sense-making. And as I mentioned, we really want kids to see math as an enjoyable subject, as that they are capable of achieving high levels. When kids start out in kindergarten, they're not afraid of numbers, nothing, but somehow, from grade one, grade two, grade three, a gap starts widening, and some kids are left just not really understanding what they're doing. And that's the goal of what we're trying to do, is make sure that all the kids are coming along, that teachers have the right lens to acknowledge what kids understand and what next steps should be. So I'm going to take you through a couple of things, but as I said, reasoning and sense-making is a huge focus for us. Something that's important, because this is just the foundational piece to kids actually understanding anything in mathematics. So we started by asking a lot of our teachers and students questions such as this. Now, these are larger numbers. Most of us, I think, worked really hard for numbers when we were in school, and it was a standard algorithm. Anytime that we saw that symbol, that operation, we went to work, going right over to the left-hand column and working our way back until we had numbers that we could easily calculate. And a lot of the time, we were using our fingers to do these calculations. We're seeing that with a lot of our students, even up in the junior grades, that they have been left counting on their fingers, tracking on their fingers, as a way to answer a question like this. So what we're hoping to do is really focus on number sense, and how would we define this? Good number sense is when kids can manipulate numbers. They look at numbers, and we always say, they make numbers work for them. So if they saw a question such as this, 39 plus 47, they wouldn't have to stack and use the algorithm. They'd simply understand, I can move numbers around, 40 plus 46 is much easier for me to do. I can calculate that mentally. Mental math is a huge characteristic of kids that have number sense, and that's why we're pushing things like number talks and number routines in the classroom, so that kids can strengthen that muscle. We want kids to, as I said, enjoy math. We want kids to, as I said, enjoy mathematics, enjoy playing with mathematics, and have more strategies. We call it in their backpack. Some kids' backpacks are fairly light because they understand the standard algorithm. They can, they can apply the standard algorithm, but do they really understand what they're doing with numbers? Something as simple, well, this usually makes people sweat. Three and a half subtract one and three quarters. We want kids to be able to feel like they can decompose these numbers without having to create a mixed number. Do kids actually understand what they're doing? That's that conceptual piece that I'm talking about. Children who have number sense are able to reason, they're able to estimate. They look at numbers, they judge the magnitude and the size of the number, and then they apply a strategy that makes sense with those numbers. What we want to get to with kids is that when they see something like 18 times 5, they understand, well, I can double and halve that, that's much easier. 18 times 5 is the same as 9 times 10. I know my 10 facts. I make numbers work for me because I understand how they work. These are all the things that we're talking about with our colleagues in the PD that we run. So that when kids finally get to a question like this, they're not just looking at that operation and going to work. They're saying, what's the distance between these two numbers? I can make this a lot easier for myself. And this is one of the models that we really want to push kids to using. This is a grade three student that answered this. There's three moves that that child made on a number line. That's a child that understands magnitude of number, that understands the distance between two points. They understand that that's not just subtraction is removal, but that those two numbers are part of a whole. That's what we're going after with the PD that we offer to our colleagues. And it's all around fluency. We want kids to be able to be efficient and flexible with strategies, to choose strategies that are appropriate, and know from memory. It's not that they have memorized their facts, but it has become automatic because they have a backpack full of strategies and they reason with numbers. So some of the projects that we're working on, system-wide this year, we have Math Up. This is a program that we purchased, a license that we purchased, so our principals could lead professional learning that was targeted to the needs of the students in their building. And this really goes after additive reasoning. Do we understand the meanings of subtraction? Are our kids able to articulate the meanings of subtraction? So that they don't just see subtraction as removal, but they see it as, as the distance between two points, and they know different strategies that they can implement. It's based on the school improvement cycle. So with Math Up, what our colleagues are doing is they are implementing a task with their students. They're moderating this task to determine what our kids understand about numbers. And then professional development that's targeted to the needs in the school begins. And it's all site-based, led by the principal. Where we come in as curriculum is we piggyback on that work, but we delve a little bit deeper. This is, oh, actually, we're supposed to, thank you, Melissa. Melissa is going to pass out a folder for you. This is probably some of the most exciting work that I've done in my career, but this is a continuum of understanding. We have really started unpacking this with the, with the teachers in schools that are involved in our monitoring project. The Monitoring and Learning Project is really focused on helping teachers to take an asset lens with their students, to look at what kids are able to do, not what they cannot do, and build from there. And so it's really, we say, we're sharpening our lens in the classroom, because all of us can add and subtract. But noticing what a child's doing and what the next best move is, that's new learning for a lot of us. This is a resource that's been purchased for all elementary school teachers that are involved in the monitoring project. What we do is we work with schools, usually five to seven schools at a time, so that we can make sure that the PD we offered is precise and personalized to what we're seeing at the student desk. That work also builds on the work that we're doing at kindergarten. We joined forces with Western's Numerical Cognition Lab. They have created a numeracy screener that can be used with our earliest learners in kindergarten. And what this does is it, it really looks at what kids come to school knowing about number, and how this can predict later math achievement scores. So if you'll, if you'll gauge me for a second, we're going to take you through one of the tasks that some of our kids in kindergarten do. And they do this on an iPad. Working with our research team, they've been fantastic. They took a paper pencil task and actually created it so that our students in year two can actually answer this on an iPad. Now, I know it says two minutes. We don't actually time kids. It's just so that we can say, after two minutes, a nice sign comes up and tells the kids, like, great job, you're done. But it gets us to see in two minutes, what do they know about number? So if you'll help me here, I want you to think about what a five or six, or actually, a four or five-year-old would have to know about number to be able to answer this. So with your left hand, if the number's, if the number's larger, tap with your left, okay? With your right hand, if the number's right on the large, I think some of you have done this with me before, you're going to tap on the right.
I'm going to go tap.
Oh, no, you're going, but I'm going to move quickly. I'm going to move quickly. All right, so let's go. Here we go. So left large, right large, right? You're just looking for the larger number. Okay, so when I go through those, which ones were easier? Was this one easier? Why? Much bigger difference. But think about a five or, a four or five-year-old and what they need to know about number. I need to identify that symbol. I need to associate a quantity with it. Then I need to be able to tell you what the distance is, which one's bigger, which one's smaller. That's a lot for somebody that's just been with us for five years. That's a lot that they need to, to understand about number. And they need rich, they need engaging activities in order to be able to do that. So what we do is we, we gather this data for our kindergarten teachers, and then we give them really fun activities that they can do that focus a lot on counting and quantity. So all the projects that we've talked about so far, from Math Up to monitoring to the numeracy screener, there's a through line. And it's really just looking at what kids understand and making sure that our next steps are precise and personalized based on that. One other piece that we found is really important is the geometry and spatial awareness for little kids is extremely important for later success in math. And that's something new. A lot of the time, spatial reasoning hasn't gotten the time on stage that it actually deserves. So that's an element that we've been focusing on with our kindergarten colleagues as well. Last but not least, our project at the intermediate level has to do with work from Dr. Peter Liladell, who is a professor and Simon Fraser. He's actually come to work with our teachers on several occasions. But Building Thinking Classrooms is really just a way to get kids in intermediate grades, we use it with our seven, our grade seven and eight students, to engage in math. Using worthwhile tasks, kids are up at boards, they're working vertically, instructions are given orally, because research says there's more uptake. But the kids are building on each other's ideas, and it creates that community that we talked about at the beginning. Teachers are loving it, kids are loving it. And these are the kinds of things that we're seeing from teachers on Twitter. The kids actually, working during class time, nope, free time during an indoor recess, grade seven students wanted to keep working on math. That's a really good, that's a really good sign. That's that engagement piece that we're talking about. We feel really confident about all the projects that we're offering at the different levels in the system, that we are offering projects that are meeting the needs of the kids. In summary, what we've done so far is we are working with all 45 schools using our Math Up program. Throughout the last two years, we've worked with 21 schools in the board. Going in, offering professional learning that's targeted, based on the needs that we're seeing after moderation at the student desk. The early numeracy screener, we've worked with 17 schools. And right now, with the intermediate project, we're working with 60 schools, with, sorry, with 60 teachers across the board. So you know what? We're going to keep working. We feel, we feel that we are targeted, and we feel really good about the Math Action Plan that we've created. And we know that this is going to take some time, because what we're doing is not a Band-Aid. It's really changing the way teachers look at students and what they're able to do. And that's it. I really appreciate, though, you giving us time to share that tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Duarte.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for your presentation. I have several, several questions here, but I'm going to ask just one right now. There's a shift in the focus of the delivery of math as per the previous government. Could you just explain very briefly what was done in the past and what we have moved to? So there's some difference. So if you could basically, in a nutshell.
Quickly, direct instruction. There's a time and place for direct instruction. When a lot of us were growing up, and even in past years, math's always been, watch me, and now do this. So procedurally, we could, we could do the standard algorithm and we could, it looked like we had understanding because we could mimic what the teacher was doing. But really, what was missing was that conceptual piece. So there's, there's much more opportunity for kids to reason, for kids to communicate their understanding, to understand the why behind what they're doing. Okay?
That's not the way I learned math in my days. It's very different, but it's, it's good. It encourages kids to think. This Math Up, you talked about, the follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The Math Up software that you talked about, the process, the thinking, has it been tested in different boards, different provinces, different successful educational system? Is that something that we, we validated and made sure it's good for our kids?
So the gentleman that has written Math Up program, in conjunction with Marion Small, who's a huge math guru in the province of Ontario, used it, he's a principal, and implemented this improvement cycle in his school and garnered significant results. They went from what used to be called OFIC schools to schools that were performing at high levels, as judged by EQAO. It's not, the program itself really just helps principals understand what an improvement cycle can look like in math. And it supports principals in creating, from grades one to eight, how can I have a conversation, how can I lead learning across all divisions? And what it does really is just go after additive reasoning. When it's done with Fidelity, it talks about strategies and tools which align with the vision from the ministry. So it, it's meant to garner results, just because of the conversations that will stem from it with staff.
Trustee O'Brien. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Wonderful presentation and a very exciting plan. I have a few questions.
Sure.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Prokation and the team. You reference focusing on fundamentals of math grades one to eight. So I'm going to read two sentences from there. It says, "Ontario students are struggling to meet provincial math standards. For the past five years, there's been an overall decline in EQAO results, math scores. This is why the government is focusing on math fundamentals. The teacher's guide will provide teachers with the resources they need to move away from discovery math and back to traditional formulas and memorization techniques." So in your math plan, I don't see too much emphasis on traditional formulas and memorization techniques. Is this because this is not an area of concern with Halton students? Because I know some boards say that.
That getting back to memorization?
Correct.
What we, if you look at the continuum that I, that I put in, that, what it is, is proficiency. We're after proficiency, not memorization. So that continuum, at the end, is the standard algorithm. The standard algorithm is in our document. We have to teach the standard algorithm. But the standard algorithm is compressed. All those strategies are compressed into the standard algorithm. But unfortunately, a lot of our students know the standard algorithm, but don't know how those numbers, how those things work together and why. So the fundamentals, if you look through the fundamentals, there's a bulleted list. And many of the strategies that are listed in the fundamentals are on that continuum, which is what we're talking to teachers about. How do you unpack this with your students? Because the idea is eventually, kids, they will almost, they will have their facts memorized, but it will be done because they have a bank of strategies to draw from.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you very much.
For you. You're up next.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So is math, what is the current textbook that's used now? We haven't changed it in years. It's Math Makes Sense, which is published by Pearson. Okay. And, okay. And so Math Up is a resource, extra resource for it? Math Up just really, it's a conversation started at the school level. How well do our kids reason with numbers? That's a conversation that we want to start in buildings. So that, so that we can start unpacking, how do we approach strategies with students so that we're not running to the standard algorithm too quickly? Do we give kids time to actually understand relationships between numbers?
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you. It's very, it looks, it looks like a lot of fun. I like math anyway.
It is a lot of fun. You are right.
This looks like a lot of fun, as opposed to Mrs. Swat and hitting me, hitting me with a yardstick. That's why one side of my head is a little flatter than others. So looking at this from a parent's perspective.
Yes.
We understand grades. So this now is really changing, changing their learning pattern. It's going to be at different rates. So how does that, how does that relate, number one, in, does the group tend to move along relatively at the same pace? You know, maybe it's the deficiency of how we, we look at report cards and say, we're gauging our child's success based on a number.
Right.
So how does that kind of relate? Maybe you can kind of describe that.
It relates beautifully, because for the, finally, we're looking at math the same way we've always looked at language. And you know that when you have a classroom of kids, they're not all reading at the same level. They can't all handle the same level text. And we know what to do about that. I'm going to give Jackie the right level of text so she can engage in the conversation and feel successful. We finally have something in math that's shifting that lens, so that we can start looking at this subject developmentally. Because if I miss something, I want my teacher to be able to say, okay, I recognize what you can do. Here's what you're going to do next. Because it is developmental, it builds. There are key pieces that build. And unfortunately, our, our textbook always doesn't take the right time to unpack that. We have great resources at the ministry. All of what I'm talking about tonight lives in our Guides to Effective Instruction, which we are continuing unpacking with our, with our teachers. It's, it's right there. So yes, there's pathways that kids take in their understanding. But just because you use a certain strategy, doesn't mean you're going to get a certain grade. It's just, it's whether you can engage in that task, how are you working with numbers? That tells me something about what you understand and helps me to decide what I need to do tomorrow to get you to proficiency, ultimately.
Do you have a question? Trustee Zalnotta. Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Last, Board meeting, we received the EQAO results, and there's a downward trend, particularly in grade three.
Yeah.
Can you speak to why that is?
It's a great question. I think the entire province is, is asking. No, we can't, we can't speak to it. The assessment in itself, when you look at it, it's fair. A lot of the pieces that, when I look at that assessment, it's rooted in additive reasoning, which is what we're trying to, which we're trying to really target at the school level through, through projects like Math Up and the Math Monitoring Project. I think that anytime there's new, we're going to see a bit of a dip. I truly believe in what we're doing. Foundational work, it's not, like I said, it's not a Band-Aid. And I'm hoping that as teachers become more comfortable recognizing what students can do, teaching at a deeper level so that kids understand those operations, I think that we're going to see, I think that we're going to see a greater result, as evidenced by EQAO. But in terms of why we, we think it's happening, we're, we're not sure.
Trustee Caraballo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Then just as a dovetail to that, then you would expect, do you have goals for EQAO tests, to, you know, have teachers make goals for themselves trying this new method and watching the kids?
So not a new method. It's not new, and I'm careful to say that because a lot of people say it's new math. This is foundational math. It was, it's always been there. It's, so we're just, but I think goals for teach, I think any teacher's goal is that a child reaches benchmark. I think that those are, but knowing that we have different learners in our class, and just because they don't reach benchmark for the grade three assessment, doesn't mean that they're not going to be successful. But we do measure it. We would like kids leaving grade three reaching benchmark because we know that they're additive reasoning, reasoners at that point. But it's, yeah, it's done at the school level.
Trustee Duarte.
Good, Mr. Chair. Sorry for all these questions.
No, that's fine.
You mentioned that this instruction method is grade one to grade eight. Now, this, I think we are just, we have rolled it out about eight years back. And for the past eight years, we are instructing the kids in this method of thinking and reasoning. But what happens when the kids go to grade nine high school and then get to university? It's brutal out there. Math is, math is math. There's no time to think. You need to get the answers and you need to get the solution. So how, how, how do you think it's going to tie up with?
Beautifully.
Has it been tested in the past?
With what? Math Up?
The, the present process and the kids going to university. And has it been tested in any system?
No, and I don't think what we're, I don't, we're not, we're not trying something out. What we're really trying to do is get kids to understand what's always been in our ministry documents. Unfortunately, we've relied on a textbook to help us understand some of the expectations. And really, this focus in Ontario has allowed Halton, our board especially, to unpack those expectations and, and the depth of which, the knowledge that goes into those expectations. My thinking is that if we achieve our goal to get kids to reason actively with numbers and confidently, we're going to see kids succeeding at senior-level math to a greater degree because this understanding is needed for algebraic reasoning. Their kids are going to be more fluent. They're going to be more confident with numbers. So I, I think, ultimately, I see this as a very positive project that, that could have great outcomes.
Trustee Zalnotta. Trustee Antomasi.
Trustee.
Do you have a question? Trustee Antomasi. Trustee Antomasi. All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Chair. My only inquiry here is that these new strategies are problem-wide and they're finding more success in other boards because the average is coming up while ours is going down. Are we lagging behind perhaps? That is, are teachers, are they not as equipped to teach these new methodologies?
I'm unable to answer what other, I know what strategies other boards are using. The resources that we're using, the what-to-look-for resources is used in many boards across the province, but I'm unable to answer what other boards are doing. I know that our teachers are well-equipped to do this. They're engaged in the learning. And I do, as I mentioned before, I think sometimes when you're engaged in new learning and we're changing the way teachers are looking at the content, this will take time. This is not, it's not a quick fix.
But I understand that, but what I'm asking and what I'm saying is, the same thing is going on throughout the province. So why is there better results in other boards whereas we're not doing so good? Are we not able to, to implement new strategies as well? I mean, you must have some sort of feel as to what's bringing our score down.
Secretary Daly.
And through you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, while we do have challenges with regards to our math EQAO scores, they are well above the provincial average. And in fact, provincial average in both grade three and six provincially, they continue to decline. So other schools or school boards are not improving at our expense. We recognize that we have work to do, but certainly compared to the province, compared to our other 29 Catholic boards, seven out of our nine EQAO indicators, if that's what we want to use as some measure of success, are either first or second in the province. The other ones, fourth in the province.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I may, just to add on to that, with regard to what Jackie has been talking about and Trustee Antomasi is alluding to, the strategies that we're using in our board are not used provincially, to my knowledge. There are strategies that are specific to the work that we're doing in Halton Catholic. And as with all change, research tells us that it takes three to five years in order for change to be documented. And the reasons as to how students are doing is a conversation that's being had province-wide in all school boards. And we will continue to endeavor to do our best and to bring these strategies specific to our school board, to our teachers and students. And we're very confident in the work that we are doing and are very hopeful that we will see the results that we're already seeing as we monitor and use assessments throughout the process to see the improvement in our students through report card data, et cetera. So I hope that helps to answer the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. At this point in time, I'd like to transition over to Melissa to talk a little bit about secondary.
I promised one other question to Trustee Zarnota.
I just want to say, well done, well done. Looking through the package, I can see a lot of time has taken place, a lot of decision makings with data behind it. And I wish you the best success and the positive energy of this program will take it to wherever it needs to go. And if you need anything else, you come back to the board and you ask us.
It's clear, Jackie, you must have had some outstanding teachers in your own.
I certainly did.
She certainly had an outstanding secondary teacher, but I understand it wasn't mathematics. So that's a call over. Melissa Carnell has to talk a little bit about evidence-based strategies in secondary.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So mine's a little musical and not quite as, not quite the same here, so I'm going to just cue mine up. Okay. So I'm going to talk about math moving into secondary. So our, as Jackie mentioned, the renewed math strategy came out four years ago. As Jackie also mentioned, the fundamentals, focus on fundamentals is now one to eight. So renewed math strategy was one to 12. Focus on fundamentals is one to eight. It's like they forgot about us in secondary. So four years ago, we had, I've included at the back of your package, this with evidence-based Basically, this just shows the evolution over the four years of what's happened with our evidence-based strategies teams. So we started off with two schools identified by the ministry, based on grade nine applied EQAO results. That was our first year. We worked with those two schools. We worked with the numeracy teams. They were cross-curricular teams, cross-discipline teams at secondary. The second year, we moved to five schools, board chosen along with those two ministry schools, ministry-identified schools. The third year, which was last year, all nine of our secondary schools wanted to be involved. We had over 100 teachers and I think it's 12 administrators. So we had VPs and principals at some schools. This year, we're just above 125 teachers involved and we're cross-disciplined. So this year, we've actually combined the numeracy team and the literacy team at secondary schools. And they're working on, it's, it's more independent this year. Last year, we were doing a lot of the learning with the teachers. And we're looking more at, it's called an EBS team. It's about evidence-based strategies, strategies that are rooted in evidence that do work. So things like the Building Thinking Classrooms project that Jackie talked about in seven and eight, we also have Building Thinking Classrooms from nine, from nine upwards. We have a few senior teachers. We even have a couple of science teachers involved and math teachers. So that whole idea of using critical thinking and the 21st century skills when they're, when they're working in math classes, we're doing that in secondary as well, which is leading into post-secondary and which, those are skills that they need when they get up to post-secondary, those critical thinking, the collaboration, the reasoning, the proving, the justification, all of those skills, which that Building Thinking Classrooms project with Dr. Liliodal, it really supports those skills. What I'm going to show you is a video set to some music. So at the end of our project last year, our EBS project, I consolidated evidence that I had from things that were said during our meetings, because I take notes, things that were written on boards when we shared as a group, or samples of student work. I pulled evidence and I compiled it to show what had happened for our year. So that's what I'm going to share with you. It is to music. That was the music I played earlier. I apologize for that. All right. So sit back and relax. Lot of reading.
And that's it. That's it. Okay. Thank you. Oh. I thought I was getting away.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you very much for that. And again, just to sort of echo what my fellow trustee has said, I appreciate all the work that I've gone into this, the focus that I see going forward on this. And, you know, I know that EQAO is always an important conversation. I know that's something that we use to try to measure some of those outcomes. But we all know that there are children who just don't perform well on standardized testing. And yet, they're, you know, what we're seeing on report cards, what we're seeing in the classroom, are high-achieving students in math. And so, you know, I'm glad that we're not discouraged, you know, while it's certainly important to have a plan, I'm glad that we're not discouraged by some of those EQAO results and we're just forging ahead and giving the students and the educators the tools they need to be successful in math. So, thank you for that.
Trustee Duarte.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Question. So, every year, we keep on modifying the program and tweaking it a little bit. So, how do we benchmark and say, from last year to this year to the next year, we are making improvements and we are making progress? Are we tracking in any way where we are right now and where we are going? Do we do that?
Tracking in general or just with math, you mean?
Specific with math because we're talking about that right now.
Well, we are, we do track. And I think the big message in secondary with us is the same as in elementary with know thy impact. And our big message to teachers is that, you know, we can't, we don't have one standard tracking other than EQAO, which is standard objective. But we want teachers to be able to look at what they're doing, why they're doing it, whether it's working and to adjust in time, understanding that they have to be responsive to who's in front of them, rather than just having a program that they're laying out, which is, I think, what Jackie was talking about with the textbook, right? We can use a textbook, turn the page, go to the next page, but if you've blocked all the students on page one, you're on page 25 and you don't have any of them with you. Whereas, we want teachers in secondary, our big message about knowing thy impact is becoming that reflective teacher and reflective practitioner, is what you're doing working. And if it's working, you want to be able to replicate that later. If it stops working, why did it stop working? Why did it work before? What can you do differently to respond to who's in front of you?
Follow up, Mr. Chair. So, I get that we are doing some work, but are we collecting data somewhere and saying that we were here at this level, level three, and now we want to get to level four, for example? And how does one school compare with another school? And are we making progress as a whole, as a system? So, are we tracking that? And is there a way we, is there something that we plan to do in future?
So, are we, yeah, well, I mean, we have, teachers are tracking, obviously, their progress. And so, we have report card data. Are we tracking as a system? We have EQAO that we track as a system, how schools are doing and where we're moving.
But EQ, I'm told that EQAO is a snapshot.
Yes, snapshot, yes.
So, it reflects that we are getting somewhere, but as a whole, as a math program in the system, maybe it's a question to Dr. Daly, if he could throw some light. Are we tracking what we are doing today, Matt, and where we are going and how we intend to improve?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. In terms of EQAO, a year-by-year is not necessarily the best comparison. We would typically look at maybe three or four years of data to see if there's trends. Because if not, we're just kind of looking at last year's data and putting it back on this year's kids. So, we do use our EQAO data in that sense. In terms around other data that we collect specific to math, it would be credit accumulation. So, the student success indicators we would use certainly in grade nine and 10 would be credit accumulation. We try and identify at a school level, class-to-class, although average is not the best way to do it. Average or perhaps the median mark would be a way to do that. So, credit accumulation across the board in core subjects and then in specific math programs as well.
Can I add, can I add one thing as well?
Yes, absolutely.
So, one other thing, speaking about the cohort data, I do have the cohort data. So, we do look at that idea to see, okay, where were these students in grade six and then looking at nine? Because as Mr. Daly said, when we, sorry, Mr. Daly, when we, when we look at year-to-year, it's different students, right? It's like comparing apples to oranges. They're not the same students. The assessment is the same, the rigor of the assessment is the same, but the students aren't. But if we look at how they did in grade six and then look at how they did in grade nine, that's a fair, a more fair assessment. And if we look at the cohort that we just had who wrote in grade nine, in grade six, they achieved, in 2015, 2016, they would have been in grade six. And they achieved 64 percent, 64 percent of students were at standard in our board. And if we do a combined applied academic understanding that we stream in grade nine, if we do a combined academic applied cohort for last year's group, 83 percent of students were at standard. So, from 64 to 83, we do have more students who have risen to standard and students who have maintained and students who have risen to standard. So, to me, that is, something is going right when we look at seven, eight, and then up into nine.
Trustees Aronota.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And I really feel like I need to get my math pom-poms out tonight for some reason. But my takeaway from that is the self-reflection that's going on at the teacher-administrator level, like I'm trying to get better and I'm trying to, not saying do it because I said so. To me, that is the foundation, in my opinion, that we're self-reflecting enough to move forward. Yeah. And that is evidence-based. We have evidence. John Hattie's evidence speaks to exactly that.
Trustee Murphy.
Just a question relating to the importance of home, at-home, having support for math. There seems to be, I would assume it's vital that parents be able, be proficient or if a parent is more proficient in math, they can help their child, they would be, it's more of a positive experience. There seems to be a disconnect with, especially with my generation, in the language, that there's new terms, there's new ways of looking at things. And as a parent, we really have difficulty being able to help our children. Is there any, is it something that the programs look at? First of all, I guess, does the data support that? Is there, what is the level of importance of support at home in regards to math? And then, secondly, if it is a vital element, is there something or a program that we can help promote to our parents to help their kids with math?
So, two parts to that, there are two questions there. So, the first one about the mindset piece. I think mindset is a huge piece, right? The attitude, parent's attitude towards math and towards helping their students. Whether you know the actual concepts that your child is working on or not, it's how you approach it and how you present. I think it's about the questions you ask, you know, getting them to critically think, getting them to estimate, getting them to prove, getting them to explain how they got an answer. You don't have to know all the ins and outs of the math program to be able to support them while they're doing their math homework. I think the idea that, you know, when we look at attitudinal surveys and we see how many students don't like math or don't feel that they're good at math, and then how that impacts math achievement, that's huge. And so, I think supporting them, supporting students to enjoy math, to enjoy the challenge, to enjoy persevering, to try to get to an answer, to enjoy the work and to just start using all those 21st century skills of reasoning, proving, justification, our mathematical processes. I think if, as parents, those are the things that you can support best, whether you understand how to get that exact answer, especially when we're moving into secondary where the answers are in the book, right? The answers are in the back of the book. It's not about just getting the answer, it's about all the work that you do to get to the answer. And as a parent, I think you can support that by supporting those processes, which means you don't have to know the ins and outs of the actual mathematics.
Trustee Antomasi.
Sorry, trustee O'Brien.
I thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Again, it sounds like a great plan. How will you, Superintendent Bacason and your team, measure the success of this plan?
The success of what we're doing with the teachers?
How do you, how do you measure it?
So, with, with the EBS work, we're looking more at, mentioned over here, we're looking more at teacher reflection, teacher practice. And so, we measure by listening to the teachers, seeing what's happening with the teachers, seeing teacher attitude. That is what's starting to impact our students.
I think there's always report card data and there's evidence in the student work that you can see what student A is at one stage, for example, in December, and what work they're producing in March. So, everything that we do is evidence-based and discussed through teacher moderation in different areas. And there's also other venues for finding out how we're doing as we go along. And I think a lot of it has to do with talking to teachers, talking to students, and getting their impact on how things are going throughout the whole process. And I think that conversation is something that hasn't taken place a lot because everything has been about the mark at the end. And it's the process that we're looking at. And we often find, the more we talk to students and talk to teachers and have them self-reflecting, the more that mark at the end is a good result for all concerned. So, the tangible aspect is through student work and evidence and artifacts that are brought to the table, where teachers moderate with curriculum staff, with principals, vice principals, and we take a look at where we're going and how we're doing. And as I said, we look at how our cohort students are doing from grade three to six to grade nine. There's a lot of good work that's going on and we just have to kind of be consistent and continue to be positive about approaching it through the various methods and strategies and progress that we've been talking about this evening.
Secretary Daly, oh? Secretary Daly.
So, you will use the qualitative piece that you told about, but you also use quantitative report card marks as well, right?
Okay.
I do see Dr. Colamore in the back row over there, who's head of our research department. She might be able to talk a little bit about some of the work we've been doing with our principals around data collection and the data portal that our schools use.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to speak to an earlier comment about how are we able to sort of track our students and do we have that data? So, historically, yes, we have lots of historical data through our IT services and we are migrating it or using it in something that we've developed in the research department called the Research Portal. And right now, it's being rolled out with school administrators and there are various applications. So, one example is, there's an EQAO dataset. And administrator, if they have a specific question, so if they want to see if students are changing or reaching provincial standards in grade three to grade six to grade nine, they can do that through this portal. So, that's just one application where we are able to show our administrators how to use this historical data to help them, you know, with their program, like program planning and school improvement plans, things like that.
Trustees Swan.
I just have a question. I think it's just in relation to another, I think, another thing that was mentioned that was in the, that was in the package that you sent. I think it was talking about student-centered coaching. I don't know if I missed that. Could you just explain a little bit more, who are, who are these student-centered coaches and what do they actually do?
Okay, let me take that. So, the student-centered coaches, we have five student-centered coaches and they are previously our itinerants, who are now assigned to two schools each. And they are going to be doing coaching where it's very teacher-driven. So, teachers decide what they, what they would like to focus on and through, they're bringing student data to the table, student work to the table to decide what they want to be their focus. And then, they're working individually or in a team, they could be in a team, with these student-centered coaches and to drive instruction and...
So, this is already in place right now or is that...
It's, yes, it's, it's starting. It's in its early stages, but it started.
Okay. What elementary schools have you targeted for?
All right. The 10 elementary schools are, will I get these right now?
I don't think it would be prudent to, I think it's in the report. The student-centered coaching schools are in the report and it's, and we have chosen those schools based upon, as our marker schools, based upon data that we have looked at over a number of years. And certainly, we can share that with you at some later date.
And then trustee O'Brien.
Again, since we have historical data, which is available in our, IT has got the data, would it be possible to present the summary of that data and then for four months in math for a couple of years in some future meetings?
That question was for Secretary Daly?
Yes.
Brian?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion. I move that in December 2019, the Board of Trustees receives a staff report on the progress made toward achievement of the goals of the Math Action Plan with measurable outcomes using qualitative and quantitative data. I'll read it again. I move that in December 2019, the Board of Trustees receives a staff report on the progress made toward achievement of the goals of the Math Action Plan with measurable outcomes using qualitative and quantitative data.
So, is this a motion as a, that qualifies as an action item or is it a notice of motion? Can I have a second or? Trustee Caravella, this, please.
All right, I'll speak first. Any initiative, despite how good it sounds, still needs some sort of tool of test to see if the initiative did in fact work. Now, in the presentation, there is a section on evidence of chain and student learning experience, and there are some great evidence-based observations that are mentioned. For example, we're working more, we are working on more highly ordered thinking problems, but this can be measured. And I know it may be tricky finding the right tools to measure with, and the EQAO certainly is not enough on its own. However, the evidence can be measured and only concrete quantitative and qualitative data will determine whether or not this math plan does in fact work.
Just a question to trustee O'Brien. Where did you get your timeline? So, December 2019, we're October, what are we now?
November.
Oh, we're November. I messed up over. So, sorry. So, where did you get the timeline for December 2019?
I figure a year and a month gives the time to at least look at the program and how it's working. 2020, that's what I meant. That was not a strategy.
Any other questions? And we're ready to go to a vote? Okay, a registered vote. Trustee Murphy.
Trustee O'Brien, could you read your motion again?
I'm sorry about that. I move that in December 2020, the Board of Trustees receives a staff report on the progress made toward achievement of the goals of the Math Action Plan with measurable outcomes using qualitative and quantitative data.
In favor.
Trustee Caravella.
To you, Director Daly. Will we not get a report like this anyway, potentially?
Yeah, I guess my suggestion would be, I'm not sure we would want to wait a year and a bit to be updated on where we're at with math. I think it would probably be worth a conversation in terms of how we might be able to update you more frequently than that, but I think we'd have to, we'd have to take a look at what our team could put together. We can certainly bring a report back in December of 2020. I'm not sure timeline-wise if it makes the most sense in terms of when we have my data, might have data, it might fit in better at a different time in the year, but we could certainly do that.
Trustee Agnew.
So, just through you, Mr. Chair, so just further to that, Secretary Daly, what would be, I mean, I understand where trustee O'Brien is sort of thinking that one year, one month. But back to your comment, I mean, what would be a realistic time for us to get a better snapshot of that? I know ideally, we'd like to have updates, as you say, more often, but what would be a better reporting time?
I might have to defer to our math team. I don't think I could give you a definitive answer right now, but...
Trustee Guzzo.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, trustee O'Brien, I understand that we get updates, but I think you're looking for more of a wholesome, like, comparison report. Am I understanding that?
That is correct. And actually, the one that would measure the plan itself.
Any other questions?
Point of order, the motion's on the table.
Okay, as the debate ended, we'll resume vote. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Caravella.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi. Trustee Antomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Brian?
In favor.
Trustee Cartal.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustees Aronota. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Motion carries. Which is HSTS. I'll ask Director Daly to please introduce the presentation.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. We're hopeful that our presentation tonight addresses the questions that were asked in Board Resolution Number 145/19. So, we're hopeful that the information that trustees are, were seeking out will be answered tonight. I welcome tonight Fred, we all, we all know, but Karen LaQua, our HSTS General Manager, Sandy Morgan, our HSTS Manager, and Debbie Field, our Transportation Analyst, are here to help us out with what looks like to be a very detailed presentation. So, welcome, ladies, and welcome, Fred.
I hope you don't mind, I'm going to sit down before I start. Hope you can see me over there. That one? Okay. Yep, thank you. Sorry. Do you mind?
I'll do that. Sure.
Sorry, we're just going to get ourselves situated here. So, the presentation that we're going to do for you this evening is in three parts. I will be taking part one, which is the Transportation Consortium Overview. Sandy Morgan will be taking the part two, which is the Annual Routing and Operational Process. And Debbie Field will take us through part three, or take you through part three, the Neighborhood Routing Case Study, specifically as it relates to the Clearview area in Oakville. So, HSTS Consortium, who are we and what service do we provide? The Halton District School Board and the Halton Catholic District School Board have been working cooperatively together as a shared transportation service model since 1996. In 2006, the Ministry of Education announced a mandate for coterminous transportation delivery between school boards. And at that time, HSTS was, basically, we opened our doors. And when we did, the consortium included the two French-language school boards as well. They left the HSTS Consortium in 2013 to join the, their own Francobus Consortium, who provides transportation services right across, basically, southern Ontario for the French boards. In September 2007, a membership agreement was finalized between the boards' transportation departments, and we opened up our doors formally as a consortium. To summarize, we are a consortium, we're a not-for-profit, publicly-funded, single-legal entity. The consortium is staffed by seconded members of the school boards, basically former transportation department employees from the Catholic Board and the Public Board. The consortium is governed by a Board of Directors, represented equally by both boards. And there are written agreements outlining the consortium membership, governance structures, and we have formal bylaws. The, when consortia was required, the ministry also required that consort should be measured for effectiveness and efficiency, and we were measured with, in different areas, consortium management, policies and practices, routing and technology, and our contracting practices. Our first ENE review was in 2009. The follow-up ENE review was in 2014. In '09, we received 60 percent rating, which was a moderate. And in 2014, we received a rating of 100 percent. And what that meant was that both boards would be funded for 100 percent of their transportation costs. To kind of put that in perspective, because Halton had been growing, funding had been set and was not, there was, had been no increases provided other than a little bit of growth funding. So, we had to find efficiencies as, as time went on and had, as Burlington grew and Oakville grew and Milton grew, funding was stable and we were having to find some efficiencies. So, the boards were getting further and further and further into, they were spending more than transportation grants. So, in 2014, that was 100 percent funded based on the results of our ENE review. The HSTS membership is comprised of a Board of Directors, the two chairs of the boards, public and Catholic boards, are on the Board of Directors, the two Directors of Education, and the two Superintendents of Business are on the HSTS Board of Directors. In addition, there's an Operations Committee, which is comprised of the two Superintendents of Business, the two Managers of Planning, myself and Sandy, the Transportation Manager. Our staff, we have myself, Sandy, there's a Manager of Administration and Finance, her name is Trina, she can't be here this evening. We have a Transportation Analyst, Debbie. We have six Regional Transportation Officers, two Transportation Officers that deal specifically with students who have special needs. We have one Financial Analyst and one part-time Communications Assistant. We have collective between the 13.5 staff members, 230 years of transportation experience, specifically in school bus transportation, which is about an average of 17 years per, per staff member. Our mission statement is to provide safe and reliable transportation services in an effective and efficient manner to all eligible students in the Halton Student Transportation Services jurisdiction. We also have a why statement, which staff, we had a, I put, we put on a PD session for staff back in March 2019, and we developed our staff why statement. And everyone in the consortium, all staff members, were very, very involved in this session. We had a facilitator come in and I also facilitated. So, I let the staff really come up with our why statement. Why do we get up in the morning and come to work? Why do they get up in the morning and come to work? What do, what do we do? So, here's the, and a lot of work went into this. So, here's our why statement, "To provide exceptional service in a supportive environment so that the start and end of every student's school day drives their success and instills the confidence of the communities we serve." A quick overview of the consortium, our 2019 annual expenditure was over $25 million. That is from our audited financial statements. We are currently managing over 200, over 102,000 students in our transportation database. Those are students from both boards. There are currently over 32,000 students that are eligible for transportation, and that is as a... that is as of October 21st, 2019. These numbers will fluctuate as new students come in, so those numbers have probably increased by today. We currently manage 450 bus routes. There are 1,928 bus runs on those routes, and over 12,000 bus stops. We have five school bus companies under contract, and we're managing 10 contracts. And the reason that five companies, 10 contracts, we did have put out two RFPs, so we have a couple of companies where we're managing two different contracts with one company, and then we have other companies where we have one contract. We also manage six taxi contracts. Some of the Halton Student Transportation Services student stats, the Catholic Board has a total student population of 36,621 students. A total of 12,352 students are eligible for transportation, and again, as of October 21st, we had been able to accommodate 478 students, Catholic Board students, riding as courtesy seat riders. We regularly transport 11,980 students for the Catholic Board. We have, we do have available on our website, and we have sent out emails to parents, asking them if they aren't going to use the bus to complete an opt-out form, we call it. And currently, we have received 850 requests for opting out of transportation, so those students we have taken off the bus. 850 Catholic and a little over 1,100 Public Board students. Currently under contract, we have 232 full-size buses, 162 mini-buses, 25 minivans, and 31 wheelchair-accessible vehicles. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at our website, but we have, pardon me, we have our annual report available on the website for your viewing pleasure. The annual report is presented to the HSTS Board of Directors at the Annual General Meeting, which is generally held in February annually. You will receive a formal invitation from myself to attend the AGM. Trustees from both boards are invited to attend the AGM on an annual basis. At HSTS, I just have to say, students, everything we do, student safety is at the crux of everything we do. We do support some student safety programs. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read this, but just briefly, we put on a first-time rider program in the summer for JKSK students and any young riders that are first-time riders. We provide mandatory safety training for every single elementary school in the region of Halton. And there's a Buster the Bus for JK to grade three students, and it's called a Rider Role Model Program for students in grades four to eight. We provide trips to the Halton Safety Village for grade two students, and we have some safety videos that are online. Some of our student safety initiatives, we download student data on a daily basis. Some of the information we receive through that download are students who have medical peril alerts. We attach that information to the student record, and that is provided to the bus company in the event, so that they are aware if there's a student that could have anaphylaxis or has asthma, or may require some type of medical intervention. We've implemented a JKSK identification tag system. We've implemented an identification tag system for students who are entering grade one for the Catholic Board in French immersion, and grade two for the Public Board, French immersion, because we found that a lot of these students new to French immersion may not have attended, or may not have been on a bus in the past. They've walked to their English program school and are now riding a bus to their French immersion school. We have bus passes, we have a Twitter feed, and we're pumping out some safety-related messages in that. We, on the right side, the right-hand column, is, these are all contractual mandatory workshops that the school bus companies are required to put on for their bus drivers. In addition, when it's not on this slide, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it, we staff sit on several different provincial committees. Sandy and Debbie are on a provincial best practice committee. Debbie is on a provincial active and safest school committee. Trina is on a provincial KPI Performance Management Committee. I'm on a provincial accident incident reporting committee. I was on a safety initiatives committee a few years back where we developed video for, specifically for school bus drivers, an evacuation video, that there was nothing available in Canada for evacuating a wheelchair vehicle. Very proud of that video. And I'm also currently sitting on a provincial rider safety committee. Some of the communication strategies that we employ, we have 12 phone lines, we have a toll-free number. We have a general email inquiry, ticket-type system environment, help desk environment to ensure timely responses to our stakeholders. We employ the services of a call center during our peak times, which is August through October. We send out targeted email messages to parents and guardians in the spring. Some of you may have received the emails that were sent. We have a whole host of information on our website. We, also on our website, we have our route delays that are posted, and parents can also, parents and schools can sign up to receive an email for a specific bus run, or even messaging. So, when we cancel school buses, we'll send out an email message. We also have the Twitter, and we try to have a presence, if we're able to, at community or member board events. Some of our incoming stakeholder communication, we staff receive an average of 1,200 phone calls and 1,000 emails the first two weeks of school annually. That does not include the emails that they receive in their own personal Halton Bus email accounts, which is generally how the schools and school board staff contact our staff. We have responded to greater than 4,800 email inquiries in the 2018-19 school year, and over 20%, 20% of our annual inquiries are received during the first two weeks of school. So, to say we're a little busy from the middle of August until the end of September is an understatement. Our annual spring communication, I'm not going to go into this detail, you can have a read, but, you know, we are trying to get some targeted messaging out to parents, guardians, and school administrators. That's the end of my section. I don't know if you want to take, you know, I'm happy to take questions now, or if you want to wait, and we can do them at the end, whatever you prefer.
Trustee Duarte.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Go to page nine, sorry. If you go to page nine of the presentation, I have a question on that. So, the table, the table, yeah. So, yeah, that's the previous one, correct. So, I'm looking at those numbers there. So, HDSV has 36,000 students, out of which 12,300 are eligible. 478 are given courtesy spots. So, we don't need to give them the courtesy spot, but we do.
That's correct.
And 850 are spare spots, which are, spare seats which are available. Is that not a saving for us? Could we not reroute and reconfigure our routes to save those 850 spots that we have there?
That's what we do. So, when a parent opts out of transportation.
Right.
We let them know that they are opted out until they let us know. So, we then plan the routes accordingly. So, we would be, keep in mind, that 850 is across all of the Catholic schools, so it isn't a huge impact, but if there are ways that we can find some efficiencies, we certainly do.
So, as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, is, so, we do reconfigure, so we are saving some money. Is that reflected in the budget that we plan for every year?
Absolutely.
So, would that reflect in the budget of the previous year or the budget of next year? Because we are doing this exercise in the current year.
It's in the current year.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien.
I'll thank you too, Mr. Chair. These courtesy seats, then, are they just empty seats that you're filling? And if somebody all of a sudden wants to take that seat, does the courtesy person get bumped out?
Through you, Chair. Yes, that's correct. So, if there is space available on a bus, and a parent has completed, filled out a courtesy seat form, and we have space availability, we will grant that courtesy seat. If there is an eligible student that moves into the area, and that seat is required for a student that's eligible, the student who has been granted the courtesy seat will be removed from, before a bus is at it.
All right. So, the parent fills out that courtesy seat form?
Yes.
All right, because I just got a call from a parent, they said they were told the principal must do that.
The parents complete the courtesy seat form up to the end of September, and then after the, starting in October, there is a different process that takes place, and the courtesy seat forms are available at the school for the parents to complete. They hand them into the school, and they are forwarded to our office.
Through the principal.
Yes, correct.
Trustee Antomasi.
Just a quick question. So, very busy, August, the beginning of school makes sense, so you get all these calls over the whole system. Do you bring extra people on staff, or is it not an issue? You have enough with the 12 there to answer all these phone calls? Because, you know, as a parent, if they're trying to get hold of someone, and they're panicked, they want someone to answer the phone, so, just curious.
Yes. We do not bring additional staff on. However, we do employ the services of a call center, and they are able to help with and answer some of the general inquiries, which is a lot of what we get, parents wanting to know what their child's transportation information is, how to look it up. The call center is, they have the tools to assist parents. So, they, if they can't assist, then the calls do come through us. We have tried having someone temporary come in for two months, but it's such a specific kind of job, and you just can't train someone for a two-month position. So, we just manage it within our existing staffing complement, and we work long hours, I'm not going to kid you, but we make it through.
Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify something. Your mandate is to provide a service to both the boards, right?
Correct.
And service that the board requests. Some of our parents get information, when there's a change in bus timings, bus routes, that HSTS has done the change, and we don't know about it. So, how would you, I mean, if you're going to provide a service to the board, the board should be telling you what to do, right? So, you're providing a service to the two boards, right?
Correct.
So, the thing is, when there's a change in bus timings, who decides that? I'm trying to get that. Does HSTS decide it, or does the board decide it?
The change in...
Bus timings or route changes?
Bus timings. We try to ensure that when we're planning bus routes, that they're arriving at schools within supervision windows and what have you. There are, and we will get into school bell times in some upcoming slides, so we can talk about that.
Yeah, I'll hold my question.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. We can move on to the next part.
Okay. Sandy Morgan will be taking you through Part Two. Do you want to switch seats?
I'm going to take you through our annual routing and planning process. So, on our first slide, we'll just wait till we get that up. There we go. We show that from, in November to January, we're collecting, and we collect and aggregate data. February to March, student information and boundary and program changes are made in our student database. Step three is our stop, run, and route optimization phase, which takes place from April to July. And from September to October, we are implementing our school bus routes and managing school startup. And then in September, and for the rest of the school year, we are monitoring performance of our bus runs, routes, and, as well as our bus operators. And, of course, the next phase is we would prepare for the next planning cycle. So, collecting, collect and aggregate data. From November to January, we're in a consultation phase. We consult with our member boards, our municipal partners, and our school bus operators. With our member boards, we are communicating with our planning departments and school programs in regards to any new school openings, boundary changes, new programs, program location changes, any future program and accommodation reviews, possible boundary reviews, any new subdivisions, or any crossing guard location changes. Information technology, we're confirming that we're receiving all the relevant student data that's transferred into the HSTS transportation database. Facilities, we will be provided with updates regarding construction progress on new facilities or any renovations that are taking place at our current schools. And school administration, if we receive any school hour change requests from the school administration, or review any service delivery concerns that they've had throughout the year. With our municipal partners, we receive road construction project information that could impact our bus routing. And with transit authorities, we review school, secondary school specials that they have, as well as any changes to school boundaries or any transportation boundaries that may be coming up in future. Our school bus operators, they provide us any feedback regarding any service delivery concerns. For example, school bus loading zones, congestion in school bus loading zones, they give us some input on possible ways that we could improve it. We receive feedback from drivers regarding the current stops, runs, and routes, as well as, we receive, excuse me, ridership counts in November from the bus operators. Our review and update includes an upgrade to our HSTS base map with data from Halton Region. We review previous GPS statistics to calibrate road speeds in our transportation database. We review growth and decline trends across Halton Region in each municipality. We review and document service delivery concerns, as well as we review trends in student ridership data that we've collected over the years. So, from February to March, we're looking at student information and boundary and program changes. In February, we create the new school year transportation database. In that new database, we update our school and program boundaries for any changes that we have been made aware of at that time. We graduate the students to the next, their next grade and their next school. New student enrollment and existing student updates are imported from the board FIS into transportation database on a regular schedule, starting in February. into transportation database on a regular schedule, starting in February. We compile school, school hour bell time requests that we've received from the schools. We update our transportation exemption areas, which is our safety and infrastructure and any grandfathered zones. Uh, we also review student data to ensure completeness and accuracy. Um, this is where we really need to ensure that the data is accurate regarding specific student needs, especially any medical information, emergency, contact information, shared custody details, uh, for transportation. Uh, this is all, uh, critical data that's required to, uh, create safe and effective transportation for our students. So now the, uh, then we get into our stop, run and route optimization. Uh, we have a definition of a bus run. Uh, a bus run is a bus that picks up students at designated bus stops in the morning until it arrives at the schools. It's also a, a bus that departs the schools in the afternoon and drops students off at the designated stops until the bus is empty. The definition of a bus route. Our bus route is a sequence of bus runs from different schools that are linked together to be served by one bus based on the school's start and end times. A bus route has a morning component and an afternoon component. And on the screen, you will see a diagram of a morning component of a bus route. We have the first pickup for bus run A. And then we, the dark line is the run path to the school. We have the deadhead time to the first run, first stop of bus run B. And the deadhead time is the time that it takes between runs when the bus is empty to get to the first pickup on run B. Um, we also may have slack time, which would be extra time on top of the deadhead time. So as you can see on run B, we get to the first stop, follow the run path, and then our last drop-off is at the school. Our loading guidelines. Um, the legal manufacturer's capacity of a full-size school bus is seventy-one or seventy-two passengers. For planning purposes, HSTS uses the following guidelines. JK to grade six, three proceed. Grade seven to grade twelve, two proceed. So since our schools are JK to grade eight, we follow a, an elementary guideline of sixty-five students. So if we ever come close to that or reach that, um, then we are looking at moving, uh, making some changes to a bus, possibly, possibly moving a stop off to another bus. And for secondary students, that capacity guideline would be forty-eight students. So when we get into the process of planning our bus stops, um, our staff review new and existing student data for any impact on bus stop placement. We review student locations and student density to, uh, implement centralized stops or, um, as well as we look at minimizing the number of students that would have to cross the road when we, when we decide on where we are placing bus stops. We assess the location of bus stops, taking into consideration student needs, student safety, the community design, such as parks and walkways, multi-lane streets and roads, as well as we have to follow the regulations in the Highway Traffic Act. Um, some of those regulations would include, um, we try not to place stops at controlled intersections. At controlled intersections, you cannot activate your overhead lights or use your stop arm. Uh, we find that a lot of times that is very confusing for other traffic in the area, so we do try and avoid that. Um, if we do use our overhead, activate our overhead lights and use the stop arm, the bus must be sixty meters back from the signalized intersection. Um, we have to review visibility in both directions approaching a bus stop. Um, if there are medians in the area, traffic, uh, approaching the bus from the opposite side of the road does not have to stop, so we have to ensure that students are not crossing at that location. Uh, pedestrian crosswalks, we cannot have our buses stopping close to pedestrian crosswalks. It would be the same as a signalized intersection. It would have to be sixty meters back. And a, uh, new, um, issue that we really have to review as well when we're planning our bus stops is we do not place them close to the traffic roundabouts, uh, just because, again, trap, with the amount of traffic going through the roundabouts, we, we have to keep those buses back away from those roundabouts. So, um, on to... Sorry. Sorry, I got into the HTA regulate, regulations and I forgot about the rest. Uh, we have to ensure, uh, bus stop placement meets the distance to stop policy, uh, which is eight hundred meters for elementary students and sixteen hundred meters for secondary students. Uh, we review the number of students at a bus stop. Um, if there's large numbers, we try to balance out those numbers by possibly adding in another stop in the area. And if the numbers are decreasing, we try to consolidate those bus stops. Um, and, uh, for graduating students, if there's, uh, no other students at that stop, we remove those bus stops. So our next step is moving on to designing our bus runs. Um, the staff must balance competing priorities when optimizing runs, with safety always being our number one priority. Um, and the following is taken into consideration. Uh, the number of students assigned to the bus and our staff review historical ridership data that they collect year over year. Um, our vehicle type required based on student needs and possibly some geographical constraints, especially in rural areas where a large school bus may not be able to travel down certain roads. So we would have to use a minibus or a minivan. Uh, the total time students will be traveling on the bus based on our existing policies, the school loading zone capacity and configuration. Um, uh, we do have to have, uh, information in regards to, uh, some schools where school bus loading zones, we do have issues in regards to the number of vehicles that, uh, can enter the loading zones. So we have to be aware of that when we're doing our run planning. And while we're doing this, we test met multiple run solutions, including shared runs with multiple schools, transfers, stop order, uh, all to enhance safety, efficiency and service delivery. Once our runs are designed, then we move to our bus routing and optimization. And our goal of optimization is to achieve the best stop, run and route design that enhances safety, service delivery and operational efficiencies. And the following are all factored into our route optimization. School hours and school hour change requests, supervision windows at schools, the number of buses at a school, the different vehicle types at a school, the total route time, including deadhead and slack time, the start and endpoints of runs to minimize deadhead travel and maximize efficiencies, our operator contract parameters. And we also try to minimize travel time in high-traffic and high-volume areas, um, such as crossing the QEW. We try to minimize that as much as possible. So, uh, to continue with bus reading and optimization, we do test multiple route configuration solutions to enhance safety, service delivery and efficiency and to assess the financial impact. We consider bell time options for route timeline and operational challenges, which will be sustainable over three to five years. And HSTS presents the annual school hour report and transportation report to the HSTS Board of Directors. So our final steps prior to startup, um, those dates I, I feel really should be, uh, instead of April to July, should say, uh, June through to August. Uh, so these are our final steps, um, prior to school startup. So we have a final review of our bus runs in June. Our, we finalize our route timelines during the month of July. Our bus, uh, during, um, end of July, beginning of August, our bus operators perform on-road run and route reviews and, um, provide feedback regarding bus times, bus, bus stops and run design to ensure operational viability. Our HSTS staff update runs and routes based on the feedback that we receive from our bus operators. Uh, we continue to review any new or changed student data on a daily basis. Uh, and if required, we add new bus stops and modify bus runs because we're continuing to get student information throughout the summer. Uh, we receive student information changes from parents and guardians, uh, through July and August. So again, we'll continue to update information. Our bus schedules are available to parents and students on the HSTS website the third week of August. And, uh, we also send letters to parents of students who are not able to access the website, because they don't have an Ontario education number at that time. So, uh, this letter informs them of their busing schedule for their children. So in September and October, um, it's our implementation of our school routes and September startup. We start the school year with a route solution that is safe, effective and roadworthy. However, we expect to make adjustments as new information is received after schools open and after student transportation schedules are released. Um, during two thousand nineteen, twenty, from August twenty-sixth to September thirteenth, uh, we implemented seven hundred and nine stop-run changes. We had four thousand five hundred and seventy-four students added to bus stops during this time period and we had three thousand six hundred and seventy-four students, students removed from bus stops. And most of these stop and run changes are basically new students coming through, address changes, families who have moved, moved over the summer, changes to daycare arrangements, that type of thing. So, um, in September and October, many of the inquiries that we receive from parents, either by phone or email and from schools, uh, most of them are involving questions about bus schedules, distance eligibility, distance challenges, courtesy seats, delivery concerns, bus stop change requests, any changes to student information, changes to day, daycare step schedules, excuse me, opt-out or opt-in notifications, transportation information requests and possibly some shared custody requests as well. At the same time, we investigate and respond to any concerns from the bus operators regarding, uh, bus stops, loading zone congestion and any, uh, run or route timing issues. Um, as well during September on, and October, we are revising our, uh, routes due to road construction or, uh, oftentimes we get last-minute road closure notifications where we have to quickly make some changes and contact parents and schools. Um, we also process new student registrations. We will perform site visits during September and October. Uh, we'll perform run and route and stop audits during this time as well. Uh, we do request student counts from our bus drivers to be used for courtesy seat review and assignment process in October. And as well, we provide bus passes to secondary schools for distribution to their eligible students as well. This is for our courtesy seat assignment. So our next slide is just going over some, um, some issues that may arise in, uh, September. Um, September or October. Um, one of them, the one, first one that we have outlined is addressing overloads. Um, I do have to say that we don't very often have overloads. We, um, we keep, um, ridership data, our statistics, review, review our information from year to year. So, uh, it is not very often that we actually do, uh, have to address an overload, um, during September. Um, if there happens to be an overload, our operators are very responsive to this. They, um, if a driver is at a school and they have seventy-one or seventy-two students trying to get on the bus, they will not move that bus. They will contact their dispatch office. That office will contact us. Uh, we will ask them to possibly provide a temporary bus over to that school to make sure that there's extra spots for the overloaded students until we can, uh, figure out why there is an overload. So when, when this issue is brought to our attention, um, we get feedback, we ask for feedback from the driver regarding how many students are riding that bus on a daily basis. We ask the stu- school staff to go out to the bus to ensure that, um, it is the eligible students riding the bus and they have to remove any non-eligible students from the bus. And that may actually, uh, resolve that issue, especially in September. There are a lot of, uh, students who are not eligible for the bus that just hop on the bus to try and get to and from school. So oftentimes, that will resolve our issue. If it doesn't resolve our issue, we will request student counts on all of the buses at the school. If possible, we'll shift those, um, uh, shift a bus stop from one bus to another's, uh, to another bus that may have capacity. And, um, if required, we will add an additional bus, but, uh, this happens on a very rare occasion. Um, and again, that's due to the data that we've compiled over the years. Okay. The next issue that, uh, we may run into is, uh, timing issues. And, um, from the start of school, we're monitoring all of our bus routes. If we notice a route that is being reported as delayed on a regular basis, that would be reported on our delays and cancellations on our website. Or if it's brought to our attention by the bus operator or a parent or school, uh, the following steps are taken. Uh, we review and discuss the timing issue with the bus operator. We assess, assess the reason for the timing issue, uh, especially if it's during the first two weeks of school. Um, it takes a while for our, uh, students to get organized. Even in the mornings when the buses are going to school, a lot of parents, uh, want to talk to the bus driver just to make sure it's the right bus, to just make sure they feel comfortable putting their student on the bus. So that takes up a bit of time as well. Uh, traffic congestion is, uh, increased at the beginning of the school year as well. So these are all things that, uh, we gather information on, uh, to assess whether this timing issue is just going to be temporary and will resolve itself within a week or two, or whether it's going to be ongoing. Uh, at the same time, we'll review the GPS data over a couple of days and see what the times or timing is like on that, uh, on that bus run. Uh, we'll perform, uh, a run and route timeline analysis if we feel that possibly we have to move that run from one route to another. Um, we may shorten the bus run length by moving stops to another bus or, as I said, move the bus to another bus route. And if these, if and when these changes are made, we have to communicate all of these changes to the bus operator in the schools who then communicates that to the parents and the students. So now from September to June, um, we are monitoring our routes. We're refining them, making any adjustments, um, and adapting our routes. And HSTS monitors on-time performance on a daily, monthly and annual basis. Uh, we have GPS on all of our school bus vehicles and it is a contractual requirement. Um, all of our bus companies must report any route delays greater than ten minutes and, uh, they report them on bus plan or web. Uh, this information is available via, via our website for everyone and it's also available via, uh, email notification. So, um, parents have to describe to receive that email notification and it will tell them if or when their child's bus is delayed. Um, the length of the delay and the reason for, of the delay must be reported as soon as the operator is aware. And other performance audit, auditing and monitoring strategies that are initiated, initiated by the customer, community and our regular performance reviews by our staff are, uh, route, run, stop and loading zone audits. We also perform, um, on-road route audits where, uh, staff are following the We also perform on-road route audits where staff are following the bus. We have operator facility audits on an annual basis that is performed by a third-party auditor. And as well, we staff perform GPS audits ongoing throughout the school year. And that's the end of my presentation on the annual routing process. It's a lot of information, but if there's any questions.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The bell times, do they come as a request from the school board, or do you request bell time?
Well, it would be a combination. Combination, yes.
Okay. Is there a limit to how late a bell time will go that you'll accept?
Yes, there is. We are now at 9:25. It's the latest start time in the morning.
What about finish time?
3:55 is the latest start, sorry, end time.
Okay. I'll be honest with you, I find that kind of late myself. It's just that there are a lot of after-school programs that start before then. I know that Ascension Elementary has a very late start time and a very late end time, and parents are kind of expressing their concern about that. Do you think it might be reasonable if you could maybe revisit that, those parameters?
It is something that we could do.
Certainly something we could have a look at. I think when we get into this next section of the presentation, it might help you, everyone to understand, you know, why some of the hours were changed within the Burlington and Oakville area. So, but is it something that we can look at? Absolutely.
Their concern was they had a late start time already for years, and it just got later. So I'm just putting that out to you.
Trustee Googel.
Sorry. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all of this work that you've done. However, I'd like to get to what the actual motion is and what we're re-dealing on, which is, all of this was supposed to be using ClearView as a point of reference. So I understand this is your general overview, but it was supposed to be put into the context of ClearView and what the determining factors were in that, and why the changes were made, what it was, where it's going to. And I know that your next section covers a bit of it, but I'm just going to kind of, there's a lot of things that I don't see in here that are part of the motion, which is, why was the change? Like, what sparked the change? What was it before? What sparked it? And what's the end result? So I don't see what it was last year anywhere in this. I don't see that in here. I see just that one bus, and I don't see what the mitigating factors is. And just time, right? We're 45 minutes in already, and we're going into Section 3. So I'm just going to head this up because this was a direct, this comes from a direct motion that was brought here at the table. So I'm just really trying to get to it and to get to the point of, I see, this is great. Thank you. Appreciate it. However, it's not part of the motion. The motion was specifically, use ClearView and explain all of this with ClearView as your point of reference. And again, I'm just going to say again, part of it was saying, what made you make the change? Like, what did you use? What was your protocol in making the change from last year to this school year? And then why did you change it back? Like, why did you make any other changes? And I don't see that clearly outlined in the rest of this presentation.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And I do understand that. One of the main concerns I had is going into this before we can get into explaining why we did what we did with ClearView. We need to provide a very good understanding of what are some of the protocols and the things that we look at when we're doing our route planning. The very important thing to notice here is that, and what we're trying to get to, is that when we're looking at any kind of changes, we're looking at a system-wide approach. So to the earlier points, any kind of change in one area can affect a great deal of other areas. So the reason that we went through this, and I know we're belaboring through quite a bit of detail, I think it's very important that trustees understand these details moving forward and understanding all of the moving parts that go into play when we're looking at making these changes. Again, it's our primary mandate of safety, efficiency, and effectiveness. Because at the end of the day, we have a very limited budget on this, and we have to make sure we use the vast majority of our resource to the best of our abilities. So again, I apologize with the length of this, but a lot of it is just to set up the groundwork so you can better understand Section 3, which then goes into some of the reasons as to why we made these changes, so you can better understand of all the other things that are working in the background that are perpetuating these changes. So we hope that Section 3 will enlighten this, but I think this was very important for us to understand these first two parts before we get into the real crux of it, I would say.
Except for, in the next section, I don't see anywhere what it was at the end of last year.
I think we'll discuss this, and we do mention things that we learned from last year, moving forward, what we wanted to improve upon it. So perhaps we will go into the presentation. Sometimes the pictures don't necessarily speak to what you're looking for. So I will take this opportunity to give, to Debbie, to go through that, explain it. And then now we're equipped with all the information to have a better discussion as to what happens as part of ClearView and what are plans.
Trustee Duarte has a question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question here. Just to add on to Trustee O'Brien's question, the timing of 9:25 in the morning, how do you determine that time? Is that something that you have done in consultation with parents, or has the time just been arbitrarily chosen?
It was done in consultation with the HSTS Board of Directors.
So the stakeholders whom we provide service have never been consulted, nor have their inputs been requested?
In the past, when school hours were changed, I provide a financial analysis to the HSTS Board of Directors, and they will either approve or not approve the school hour changes. There hasn't been, in the past ever, any consultation in regards to changes to school hours.
Secretary Daly.
I was going to say, the question is probably better to what information came back to the board from that meeting as opposed to what the HSTS decided.
Trustees are not done.
Very quick question to you, Mr. Chair. Just, you talked about performance, monthly performance. What was ours for September of this year?
We look at, when it comes to performance, we're looking at the number of late, I don't have those, I didn't bring those stats with me. I can certainly provide them to you, but those type of KPIs that we're looking at with the bus operators, I can tell you, year over year, there has been a significant improvement with regards to the driver situation and the number of late buses that we're seeing. I don't know if anyone looks at our website or saw it years ago. We would have a list of buses that were late, a list. And now we have a small list. Two years ago, for example, we had in September 65 routes that didn't have a driver, or a full-time driver, I should say. And as of today, we have 18. So there's been a significant improvement in on-time service delivery, which has been great. But I can provide some stats to you. You'd be happy to.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. A question to Secretary Daly. When there's a request for a change in school bell times, does it come to you and your office? And then what's the process? I just sort of know. Does the principal just make a request to HSTS? Or does it come to your office? And what's the process?
The school bell time, it would first probably go through Fred. It comes to senior admin. So we look at the parameters. Fred brings a summary of where there might be possible savings in terms of route efficiencies. We discuss it as a senior team, and then we go from there and send those parameters back to HSTS and say, within these timeframes, here's where we think changes can be made.
Mr. Chair, follow-up question to Secretary Daly. Do we consider the ripple effect of changes in one school time on the system? Are we only looking at savings, or should we not consider the thousands of students that are impacted? Do we do that study before we decide change of school timing?
Mr. Chair, I think every decision we make around transportation is a system decision, recognizing that a change at one school does have impacts on many other schools. A change on one run can have potential changes on many other runs. We do recognize that, yes.
Can we go into Part 3? Please, go ahead. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I am doing part of the locational study overview, and this is going to focus on the ClearView area. We've broken it up into a few sections. What we learned in 2018-19, or what changes we knew we had to bring forward for the new school year, what we did in 2019-20 for Oakville and ClearView, the results of our routing optimization, the parental concerns regarding our planned solution, our implemented solution, and the results of changes. So what we learned in 2018-19, why we were seeking improvements or changes, things we had to do, things we knew we had to do. The first one was, there's a major shift in enrollment in Oakville, both enrolled students and students who are eligible for transportation. South of the QE, we have, and that includes ClearView, the enrollment has been declining. The number of eligible students, transported students has been declining. This past year, it was in the 3% range. Between the QEW and Dundas, total student growth is 0% and is now starting to decline. We only have limited infill areas in that area, so the number of eligible students is starting to decline as well. North of Dundas, that area has been growing immensely over the last four or five years. Last year, the total number, last year to this year, the total number of students increased by 21%, but the total number of eligible for transportation students increased by 43% because the students, families, were now moving in to the housing developments that were east of Sixth Line and east of Trafalgar Road. And there are no schools for either boards in that area currently. So all the students in that area, be they elementary, secondary, Catholic students, public students, are being transported to their school. So one of our best practices is that we have to redeploy our resources. Essentially, we needed to move our bus routes from where the student growth was trending downwards to where student growth, where buses were required. We made a comment about bus delays in east Oakville due to driver shortages. I wanted to touch on this because this is still a continual problem in east Oakville. I have been working in the Halton region in busing for about 18 years. It was a problem 18 years ago. It doesn't matter who the operator is, be it stock, first student, and now Switzerland Cardi. There is recruitment and retention challenges for the operators. It has to do with the economy, the economic area, you know, where we're, I think probably most service providers have a challenge out of east Oakville. What I will tell you, though, is the contracts that the boards, that HSTS entered into with the operators two years ago has drastically reduced our driver shortages, and drastically reduced driver shortages in east Oakville. But we still have a problem. One of the ways we resolve that problem is having the optimal number of routes, or maybe fewer routes. But one of the things about having drivers is that it improves on-time service delivery, which is ultimately, our goal is to get students to school on time. Okay, there were opportunities for efficiencies and sharing. Again, another best practice, I'm mentioning some of the ones that involved the Catholic Board. Last year, the extended French program experienced boundary changes in Oakville. It expanded from four to six sites. Students were grandfathered and will be grandfathered for the next three to four years. There are actually fewer eligible transported students for extended French immersion, which I think was your goal because they're closer to their community school. But these students are spread out. Early French immersion, there's program growth. This year, we added grade seven. Next year, we added grade eight. So that program is growing, and the number of eligible students is growing. We had to reserve capacity in our southeast Oakville route timeline for St. Nicholas, who was, they are moving mid-year. While we were doing our planning last spring, we didn't have a definite date. All we knew, it was not going to be September. So we had to plan to be able to be flexible in the year. There's ongoing traffic issues at St. Thomas Aquinas due to congestion. I was around when the Aquinas boundary included St. Mary and Holy Family area, and there were 16 and 17 big buses coming into Aquinas. We had to have waves. We had to, you know, just everything to minimize congestion, but it still was very congested in that school. We were down to 10 buses, which was quite manageable. And that gets, again, students are getting into school on time, they aren't sitting in traffic, they're getting out of school on time. And again, I won't say, it wasn't just St. Thomas Aquinas, other schools have traffic congestion issues too. So what we implemented, this was part of our plan, with St. Thomas Aquinas and Oakville, Trafalgar High School, in the ClearView area, we have shared buses and transfer buses. And this is to improve service by reducing the number of buses in an area that has a history of delayed buses due to driver shortage.
Excuse me for a minute, ma'am. I have to take care of a procedural issue. We have to extend the time beyond 10 o'clock. So I'll just be 30 seconds, and then you can resume.
I can take a break.
I need a motion to extend the time to 10:30, please. Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Murphy, all in favor? Motion carries. You can resume. Thank you. Oh, yes, of course. Vince, are you still there?
I'm still here, and I'm in favor.
Is Aaron there? Yep.
I'm here.
And Eleanor, Eleanor, you're there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Are you in favor?
Favor.
All right. Motion carries.
That's fine. Thank you. Okay. The next thing we did was we changed school hours, some school hours, to expand utilization capacity in the routing timeline. We changed four public elementary schools in Oakville to a 9:25 entry. At the same time, we changed Ascension, as Mr. O'Brien has mentioned, and Frontenac, which is the adjacent public school in Burlington. Those schools have always had shared runs. So those hours were also changed. And the reason we did that, those schools are on the Oakville border. They have traditionally been serviced by a number of the Oakville routes. A bus will do an Oakville school and then finish up with Ascension and Frontenac. So that's why those hours were changed. We combined and expanded our shared busing to improve service. And what we made by improving service is to shorten ride times and/or shorten the walk distances to stop. Our theory is one neighborhood, one bus. So I've listed several examples up there where we have done run sharing. To address a question that was mentioned earlier about time changes, St. Vincent and E.J. James has, they're on their second year of run sharing, there was a slight shift of five minutes, I think it was five minutes, for each of the schools to make that run sharing possible. What we didn't implement, we did not- What we didn't implement, we did not change any school hours for schools that already had a change in the past three to four years. When we change a school hour, we try to make it sustainable over the, over three to four year period because we know, we recognize that it can be disruptive to a community. So, we try to make sure that it lasts for three to four years, usually more than that. Okay. I wanted to give you a couple of visuals of what a route looks like on a map. This route here, first one, Route 108, the pink run was a combined Aquinas and, if you don't mind me saying, I'll just use OT just for short, I'll use Aquinas as OT. It was a combined run and we had three stops that we picked up in the Clearview area. We got down to Oakville-Trafalgar School. The Aquinas students, there were 20 of them, transferred to another route, which I'll show you next. That bus was then sent back up to Clearview where it started its run for St. Nicholas because St. Nicholas has French immersion and the French immersion boundary runs all of south Oakville, so that bus has to go and pick up students in Clearview. And then it follows this route through south Oakville and then drops off at the, currently the St. James site for St. Nicholas. This next map is, again, another run that starts in Clearview, picks up Aquinas and OT students, comes down, stops at, stops at OT, drops off the OT students, picks up the Aquinas students who transferred from this previous bus, and then carries on to Aquinas. The bus then goes and does the routes that you see up top there in pink and blue in west Oakville, although we are crossing the QE, it's a west Oakville school, so we're trying to keep them in certain areas to be serviced. The next is a bit of a grid. Now, these are the routes for St. Thomas Aquinas out of the Clearview area only, and these are six out of 135 big bus routes in Oakville. My apologies, six of 135 routes in Oakville. So, just to give you a visual, the ones that have a red star, they all carry Aquinas students, but they terminate at OT and those students transfer if you follow the arrow, so that those buses can then go and do another run that is in southeast Oakville, like St. Vincent, there's another St. Vincent, and the St. Nicholas that starts in Clearview. The buses that go all the way to Aquinas are then redeployed after Aquinas, and those are the ones with the yellow stars, to do west Oakville runs. So, this is, what we try to do is keep the runs in an area so that they're well deployed. So, the results of this planned optimization, the number of buses at St. Thomas Aquinas remained at 10. The total number of buses in Clearview is now six, which is down one from last year. So, we're down, and I say six, that's combined OT and Aquinas buses. The average distance to stop for the St. Thomas Aquinas students was reduced by 144 meters and for, at 17 meters for the OT students. The average ride time for the Aquinas students did increase by three minutes, no change for Oakville-Trafalgar students. We felt that the increase in three minutes, which was probably the transfer, was offset by the distance to stop, walking distance of 144 meters, plus we were able to redeploy a bus to the north where there are more students now. Okay, Sandy is going to now speak about some of the concerns that we received from parents regarding our route solution.
Well, that's, can I? Okay, yeah, I can. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, these were the concerns that were brought to our attention from parents of St. Thomas Aquinas students in the Clearview area. One of the concerns, they were concerned that they felt that the buses were overloaded. There was a perception that the buses were overloaded, but they were not loaded over the legal capacity. And this was during the first week, possibly the second week of school. And this, as I said, is a time when we may run into ridership issues due to some students getting on the bus that are not eligible for transportation. Because these buses were shared with Oakville-Trafalgar, there could have been some students from that school who were not eligible for transportation who were getting on the bus. At that time, the eligible students had not received a bus pass. Normally, bus passes are distributed closer to the end of September. We have to wait until the students receive their student ID cards. So, that's one of the reasons why generally, most of the secondary students do not have a bus pass in September. In our explanation, as I said, it is not uncommon to have a greater number of students riding the bus at the start of the school year, but we noticed, noticed year over year that this will stabilize over the second or third week of school. Again, this is when non-eligible riders tend to hop on the bus and take the bus to and from school. And we also noticed that ridership fluctuates with secondary students on a daily basis, especially during school startup. So, our response to this, I think I did cover some of the process for investigating an overload on Slide 33 in Section 4. So, we do commence an investigative process regarding any ridership concerns. So, some of the actions that, that we took in regards to this situation, in regards to the ridership issues, we asked school administration on-site at the transfer school at OTHS to ensure that students getting on the bus were eligible to take the bus. We asked the bus operator to take student counts over a three-day period. We arranged for a shadow bus to assist with any of the possible ridership issues. And we asked for earlier distribution of bus passes. And as well, with that earlier distribution of bus passes, then the drivers started checking bus passes at bus stops and at schools when they were loading at the end of the school The next concern that was expressed by parents in the Clearview area was the secondary students transferring buses at a member board school. The concerns related to the transfers that we received from the parents were the safety, they were concerned about the safety of the secondary students having to physically get off the bus, off one bus, and transfer onto another bus at the member board school. They were concerned about who would be responsible if anything happened to a student when they were transferring or if they had to wait at the transfer school for the transfer bus. They were concerned about delayed buses, so if a bus was delayed getting to OT, then the student may miss the transfer bus. Inclement weather was also an issue that was brought up to, to our attention, which would cause students to have to wait outside for the transfer bus if it was delayed. And as well, we were informed that buses were arriving later at St. Thomas Aquinas in the morning than they had been in the past. So, these were all issues that we wanted to investigate and respond to. So, some of the planned strategies that we had in effect at school startup, because we had the transfer buses already arranged, was that all the buses servicing that the school at OT were serviced by the same bus operator, so the drivers could remain in radio contact at all times if one of the buses was delayed. Time was built into the bus runs to allow transfer students to remain on the bus until the bus, the transfer bus arrived at the school. And all transfers are performed in the bus loading zone, so students would never leave the school property. Additional strategies that we were planning to implement to address these concerns, we were planning to adjust the bus arrival time at Oakville-Trafalgar to reduce the possible student wait times for the transfer bus. Those times were being reduced from five minutes down to three minutes, so that would have been a three-minute wait time. We also adjusted the schedule of the shared buses so that they would arrive earlier to Oakville-Trafalgar High School, which in turn would result in an earlier arrival time at St. Thomas Aquinas. Sorry, that was, this last point, adjusting the schedule, that was something that we were planning to implement. So, as on the last slide, I said we had implemented certain strategies prior to September, and we were ready to implement additional strategies, strategies to address the concerns. However, but in the end, the final actions taken to address the parent concerns were the transfer buses were removed from the routing design for St. Thomas Aquinas students. Some run sharing was continued between St. Thomas Aquinas and Oakville-Trafalgar. Additional buses were required to offset the extra travel time added when the transfer buses were removed. And the pickup times were adjusted for an earlier arrival at St. Thomas Aquinas. So, now we'll go back to Debbie and she'll talk about some of the actions taken.
So, I'd like to speak to what the adjusted routing results look like. So, all transfers were removed, both at the beginning and end of the day. All Aquinas buses and students start and end the day at Aquinas. The runs on the routes were reorganized to not disrupt Catholic or public elementary schools already on the routes and to minimize disruption to Oakville-Trafalgar High School students. The results, the total number of big buses at St. Thomas Aquinas increased from 10 to 12. We have two extra routes, which currently are single-run routes. In some cases, we reduced our time buffer, or we have too much in there, something that we would not normally have in our planning solution. Out of the Clearview area, for secondary students, we started with six big buses, five of which were shared. The adjusted routing result, we now have eight big buses, three of which are shared. Again, using the same routes that I had previously, Route 101 and Route 108, because there are no transfers, these initial runs out of Clearview now only service Oakville-Trafalgar students. The Aquinas students were put on a, on a separate run. We had to leave it this way so that we were not disrupting the other schools that were on the routes and so that we could still get to these other schools on time. The first route is Oakville-Trafalgar and then it continues on and does the north Oakville schools. The second route, again, now just does Oakville-Trafalgar and goes back and picks up St. Nicholas. The third route we're showing you there, Route 109, is a compilation of the Clearview stops that previously had been shared with OT, and they are now on their own route and going directly to St. Thomas Aquinas. So, now I'm showing you our routing grid, which looks different than the one you saw earlier because there are two additional buses. Some of them, we have reduced slack time, which may be problematic once winter comes. We hope it will not be. We also have two new routes that do not have additional runs, so the costs are not shared. This is, this is a solution that was not done in the planning cycle, but it was done to satisfy parental concerns. Any questions?
Trustee was open. Thank you, thank you for this. So, I have a question in regards to the expressed parental concerns. I, I am the trustee that was, was acceded on all of the concerns in regards to the transfers. I think some of the characterization of how the concerns came forward are a little different than how presented, but I want to ask one specific question. The comment was made about there was a perception, it's on Slide 47, there was a perception that buses were loaded over legal capacity. So, at the beginning of your presentation, you talk about safety and safety being the first concern. We talk about, when we're talking about high school students here. There were pictures and videos, and I know, sent to, to HSTS, sent to the director's office, on more than one occasion, where students were seated three to a seat in the alleys. So, when you make the statement that it's perceived, it's a perception that the buses were over legal capacity, but in fact, they weren't over legal capacity, what are you referencing? Are you saying that's okay to have students over 48 on a bus?
It wouldn't be something that we would do on a regular daily basis, but as I was saying, at the start of the school year in September, we do need time to make those adjustments to ensure that we can get students off the bus that are not supposed to be riding the bus. So, and that takes time to investigate, it takes time to gather that data. So, in that case, as I said, we could have had a, another bus provided by the operator if that was something that was going to be happening on a daily basis and allowing us that time to resolve the issue. But, as I said, numbers fluctuate in September, so we can have a secondary bus that might one day have 52 students on it and the next day it might have 40. So, we have to determine whether, okay, is it going to be 40 on a regular basis or will it be 52 on an ongoing basis? And at that time, we have to make an adjustment.
Sorry, follow-up question, Chair. But in regards to that, though, you said that you, you look at the numbers and you're making reference to students being on the bus that weren't. What were the outcome of that? How many students were on the buses that weren't supposed to be on the buses, on your study of it?
I think Mr. DeBoe wants to weigh in on this, right?
Quick, the, the perception that we were talking about, there was a legal maximum, which would be the 71, 72, which, as Sandy pointed out, the bus driver would not depart if that was breached. And there's also the guideline that we operate within, which is the 48 to a seat. So, that's the guideline that we want to stick within. What was seen is that there were, and I saw some of the emails as well, it was a perception that we've gone over the legal requirements, so we're doing something that was illegal in transporting these students in the aisle. That, that's what we're trying to say, whereas over the 48 isn't illegal, it's just beyond our guidelines, operating guidelines as a board.
Well, I think what their perception was, it's a safety issue, regardless if it's over the legal limit or not. If it's over our guidelines, it's, it's a safety issue. If we set 48 as a guideline, there's a reason why we set 48 as a guideline.
The distinction of your, and I just want to clarify, was the perception that we were doing something illegal is what we're trying to express in those statements in the slides. We just want to make sure that you all understand we did not do anything illegal. We just had buses that were overloaded that, as Sandy was pointing out, we were looking to address to reduce it because we do acknowledge three to a seat is not ideal, nor is it what we want to see on the bus. So, I just wanted to make that clarification.
So, and then my question, my follow-up question was in regards to what was the outcome, how many students? How many students that weren't supposed to be on the buses? What was your, what was the results of that? Because you said that after you review it and you find, you had stated that there are students that were riding the buses that shouldn't be there? What were the results of that study?
Right, so we found that, we contacted the public, the Oakville-Trefalgar, and asked their staff administration to go out and check the students that were getting on the bus. And the other thing, everything was happening so quickly while this was going on. But one day we find out there was 56 students on the bus. So we contacted the Oakville-Trefalgar, as I said, asked if they staffed to go out and check these students from OT who were getting on the bus, because obviously, they would have students who are not eligible for transportation in the Clearview area. St. Thomas Aquinas wouldn't. So it would be Oakville-Trefalgar students that were not eligible for the bus that could possibly be getting on the bus. So that's why we went to that school.
Clearview, they would all be eligible?
No, no.
Which area of Clearview wouldn't be eligible? Because the stops that you have listed here aren't?
There is a pocket of students who attend Oakville-Trefalgar that are not eligible for transportation.
And they're committed to whatever.
Yes. Quite a bit of the south part of the Clearview.
You're Sheridan and Sheridan Drive, yes.
Do we have any other questions? Trustee Zarnota.
I have a question.
Trustee Zarnota, then trustee Yantomasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Ladies, thank you very much. A lot of work went into this. I just am recognizing there may be a gap that we all need to work together on. The whole overloading is how are they getting on the buses? And how do we know it's St. Thomas Aquinas, Oakville-Trefalgar, maybe not someone else just got on the bus? I feel like listening to this, we have a gap as a group of how people are getting on the bus without a bus pass. And I know there's many things that are involved in that, but we're talking safety? How do we know who's going on the bus, or even a member of either one of those schools? Or any of our schools, for that matter? So I think we need to look at that gap. I offer that up.
Trustee Yantomasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering, so for K to 8, what is the maximum amount of students on a bus? And then if K to 12, is there different numbers for each group of students?
Through the Chair. There, the legal capacity of a school bus is, depending on the rear seat configuration, is between 71 and 72 passengers. It does not define age. It's 72, 71, 72 passengers. We have a loading guideline that-
Okay, but are there no guidelines for K to 8, K to 12, and 9 to 12? I was under the impression, have always been under the impression, that there were certain guidelines that we should meet.
Yes, there are. The loading guidelines that we use for a JK to grade eight school is 65 students, and the guideline that we use for secondary is 48 students.
Okay, which has been keeping, but I thought K to 8 was 60 students. So you're saying it's gone down to 55?
No, I said 65, 65.
Sorry, 55, my mistake. So it's gone down from 50 to 55. I used the 50. So you're saying now it's 55, correct?
No, it's always been 65.
65, okay.
Correct.
So what I'm looking at here in Ontario, guidelines that our typical bus maximum capacity will be K to 8, 60 students per standard bus. Where K to 12 is 54 students per standard bus. And 9 to 12 is 48 students per standard bus. You're telling me these numbers are wrong?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're looking at.
This is Ontario's guideline for maximum number of students per bus according to the grade level that they're in.
From a, is that from a, from the ministry?
From the Department of Transport, that's from the Ministry of Transportation.
If I may interject from it, I think it would be fair to share those numbers ahead of time, or subsequent to this conversation, so that they can-
You're absolutely right, Mr. Chair. I was just verifying the information.
Yes, okay. So I'm going to take this opportunity to do again that procedural thing whereby, to extend for another half hour. And we need unanimous consent in this particular case to go to 11 o'clock. So may I have a motion? Trustee O'Brien, trustee Guzzo. All in favor, we're going to register to vote. Trustee Murphy?
You need it.
In favor?
Trustee Carrabella.
She disconnected from the line at 10:17.
Trustee Yantomasi.
Can you please take a vote with the city members that are at the board table? And then you come to us? Because we're outside anyway, this doesn't impact us.
You got a good point, you're at home.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so you don't want to vote, is that it?
No, I'm saying we can vote at the end.
All right. Trustee O'Brien.
In favor?
Trustee Caratua.
Abstention, if it's allowed.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor?
Trustee Zarnota.
In favor?
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor?
I think we have unanimity. Oh, trustee Yantomasi.
In favor?
We have unanimity. We're going to 11 o'clock. Please resume. You were last to talk, and Mr. Yantomasi, would you continue on?
So my questions were answered, but it seems that the numbers need to be verified, so that should come with another vice. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. So going to, through you, Mr. Chair, under C, results of optimization. So I see that it was talking about efficiencies and decreasing from 10, or 12 buses, down to 10 buses. We reduced, in Clearview, it went from seven down to six. Were the numbers down? Is that why in Clearview specifically? I know you've shared the routes, but, because I look at the numbers that were originally shared with me back in September 3rd at this time, and it was six buses. And I was only shared five routes for the morning. And of the five routes, 97 were Aquinas. And if capacity is 48 high school students, why did we have six buses? And why did we have to have five transfers out of six at OT? Like, I'm having a hard time. To me, it just, because I live in Clearview, so just for full disclosure. I live in Clearview. And I looked at your stops, and I did, based on kilometers, where the stops were. Because one of the things that the parents shared, and I believe they shared it in some of the phone conversations with, I know with Fred and myself, was that if it meant decreasing bus stops, that that would be something that they would be okay to as long as it stopped the transfers. So I just wonder if any of that was taken into consideration before having that many buses share and transfer? I guess what I'm trying to get to is the root of why we changed something at the end of the year of 2017, 20, or 2018, 2019, to the beginning of the 2019, 20, and why Clearview was used to make those changes. So I'm trying to understand that, and this really doesn't-
Yes, there was decreasing enrollment. The three buses that serviced southeast Stokesville into Aquinas last year were not at full capacity. And one of those buses actually went through to the Holy Family area and picked up the last of the grandfather students. Because last year was the last year Holy Family students, area students were grandfathered to St. Thomas Aquinas. So the numbers have softened. Again, none of the three buses at Aquinas was at capacity. And so we were looking at, to utilize the capacity on those buses, we would probably have left two of the buses similar to where they are, maybe a little bit longer. And then the other bus would probably have to go and pick up students on the other side of 16 Mile Creek before it carried on to Aquinas, to fill up the buses, again, to an adequate capacity. OT buses were, again, too softening to some extent. So we have, again, a number of options that we, in our toolkit, that we can explore to utilize our capacity, our resources as best we can. And we looked at just flat-out sharing the buses, and then carrying on to Aquinas. That was putting, and we could have done that. But what that meant is that we would have, we would have had six buses traveling into OT, and then carrying on to Aquinas, four buses to OT, and then carrying on to Aquinas with anywhere between seven and 20 students, which doesn't make sense. So what we did was consolidate those, the Aquinas students on the six, well, actually, it's on five buses, onto two transfer buses. And then move them along to Aquinas. There, you know, we looked at, we looked at various options. This was one option we could do that didn't have to change bell times, didn't have to make any other changes for the students. And again, we did the route solution. Had we put it together, and the students were going to walk further, ride longer, we would not have proceeded with it. We came through with a route solution that we felt improved the service delivery for the students, and allowed us to redeploy a resource.
Trustee Duarte.
Mr. Chair, in your opinion, who is, in your opinion, who at HCDSB is responsible to check the routes that you create? Is there anybody in your opinion that is responsible to check the routes? Once you determine routes? Do you think that it's required that somebody else checks the routes, or that's it? And verify, or do a random check, or something like that?
Well, I will say, when it comes to the efficiency piece of the routes, the ministry is very actively checking. And they are looking at the development of a new transportation funding formula. Back in May of 2019, they started the process. The announcement was made with the grant announcement. And they requested that every consortium across the province provide detailed student data, that they were then less student named. So they were looking at distances, home-to-school distances. Oh, Debbie, can you help me here?
Density, number of students on a road.
Can I clarify my question?
Certainly.
So we are all human beings, we make mistakes. The ministry has got certain requirements, okay? So when we create the routes, do you think it's required that we do a spot check? Or is a spot check being done presently, or what?
Once the routes are developed and created, they are, as Sandy had mentioned, in July, they are provided to the bus operators, and they perform. They go out and drive the routes in the-
So my question is, do we do a spot check on the routes that are created right now?
We're spot checking them all the time, yes, yes. We do audits, GPS audits. We're watching those buses every day, every day. And we have had, we, under contract for quite a few years now, a third-party auditor, auditing firm, who, because the MTO, their resources are limited now, they aren't able to go out and do facility audits on the school bus companies as frequently as they did 10 or 15 years ago. So our auditing firm actually goes in and performs an audit that's very similar to an MTO audit. So we are doing that on an annual basis.
I'm going to take this opportunity. Trustee Yantomasi, I'm about to pass the gavel, because I got a responsibility at home that's just come up that I need to deal with. So I'm going to take two minutes to organize my vice chair, and I'm going to pass. I'm going to, I'm going to have to go, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Well, we're still dealing with questions.
Yeah, we're still dealing with questions.
Trustee Yantomasi, do you have a question?
Through you, the new chair. Who is responsible at HSDSB for signing off on the route that has been established and developed for approval?
Through you, Mr. Chair. As it relates to those, as you may have seen through the conversation and through the study over here, there are, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, there are a significant number of routes that are adjusted, changed, and updated on an annual basis. I don't think that they're always consistently the same year over year. So when we're going in, and HSTS is providing the Board of Directors an information report as to what the services are going to look like the following year, it's more on a budget standpoint as to what the new, number of new buses, new routes, bell time changes. Those are the things that are brought forth to the Board of Directors comprised of the Chair of the Board, the Secretary of the Board, as well as the Superintendent of Business, which counterparts at the Hilton District School Board then approve the overall picture. We do not have the resources, nor do we have the expertise to review all of the routes, nor do we have the time. On top of the oversight that HSTS is already conducting on doing their testing, their analysis, their review, their spot checking, their audits, to do so would be to duplicate the services that we have seconded staff to the Hilton Student Transportation to do once over. So it'd be a complete duplication of efforts. And just to begin, to be clear, the Hilton Student Transportation Services are both Hilton Catholic District School Board staff, as well as they are Hilton District School Board staff. These are our expertise, these are in-house experts that are verifying, spot checking, and providing oversight. I just want to be clear on this.
For you, Mr. Chair, I'm not getting an answer here. So my question is very pointed. At some point, the routes come to our org, we are responsible for looking at them. I don't think that our org would want to approve a route where children are being dropped off at a public school and picked up subsequently by another bus. That to me would not speak to safety. That to me would raise a flag and say to me, hey, you know what? This isn't right. So I would think, has this happened before? I've only ever heard of it this year as being the first time, where we drop off children, and then we subsequently pick them up with another bus in a school that is not within our system.
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, it's not, the first year it's been done. Trustee Yantomasi, we've used transfers a number of times in a number of municipalities.
Any thoughts, is that acceptable? So we brought up the issue that we're looking at safety, and what is equitable for our students to get from their home to the school? Do we, are we now saying, HCDSB, are we saying that it's okay for us to drop off our kids at a public school and subsequently pick them up and take them the rest of the way? Because I don't think there's a trustee at that board table that would agree with that. I, for one, would be against it.
Was there a question in there, trustee Yantomasi? Statement? Thank you.
That was both a question and a statement of fact.
Could you restate your question?
The question is, does HCDSB, the people responsible for overlooking how the procedures relate to pickup, are we okay with dropping off our kids at a public school? relate to, to pickup, are we okay with dropping off our kids at a public school?
Maybe I just want to clarify, because I think there's a little bit of a, I just want to be clear, we're not just dropping our kids off at a public school. The intention is that they have the ability to stay on the bus that they arrive in until the transfer bus also arrives, at which point they could transfer from one bus to another. We're not stranding them at the, at the school. So just to be clear, that's the procedure that we use in this.
I didn't use, Fred, I didn't use the word strand. I said, we deposit the kids on the grounds of a public school, and then they wait for a bus to pick them up to take them the rest of the way. So my question is, is that acceptable procedure? In my mind, as a trustee, only one trustee, I don't think that's acceptable.
So trustee Antomasi, if I can suggest, what I'm, what I'm taking from your question and statement is that you would like to have further discussion amongst the trustees regarding this matter, is that correct?
Yeah, it was just an observation. I'm just making a statement, that's all.
Okay, thank you. That's something that maybe you can bring forward at a future meeting, and we can discuss that in further detail. Do we have any other questions regarding this matter? No? Thank you very much.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you very much for your very in-depth presentation.
Thank you.
We have no delegations, so we're moving on to item six point one, which is approval of minutes. The minutes of October fifteenth, regular board meeting, can we have a mover and a seconder? Trustee Agnew and trustee Duarte, all in favor? Motion passes. Business arising from previous minutes, we have a list of outstanding items for your information. Action items. Eight point one, Superintendent Merrick, proposed twenty-twenty facility renewal projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we're presenting the proposed twenty-twenty facility renewal projects. These are now presented as a action report, but the report is otherwise unchanged from our staff report a few weeks ago. Just as a refresher, the proposed projects for summer twenty-twenty, we have four projects, two being roofing projects at Corpus Christi and St. Christopher, as well as a lighting project at Holy Trinity School, and also a refresh and renovation for the Thomas Merton Center in Oakville, which is currently the St. Nicholas of the former St. James Building. So we have two resolutions for consideration tonight by trustees, the first to approve staff to proceed with the projects, and the second to approve the budget of just over six million dollars.
I'll read the first motion. Be resolved that the Hilton Catholic District School Board authorizes staff to proceed with the proposed twenty-twenty facility renewal projects. May I have a mover for this item? Trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Is there any discussion, any questions? No? We'll have a recorded vote. Trustee, sorry, trustee Duarte.
Question here, give me a second. Here, Corpus Christi, through you, Mr. Chair, Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School, it says that the roof, the majority of the roof was installed in two thousand and eight. So question here is, what is the lifespan of the roof? And of a typical roof for a school, what's the lifespan? Is it ten years?
Typically, you want about twenty, but this one has not lasted that long. It's been, had severe issues with it. And once the insulation underneath it gets wet, we're gonna do a lot more problems. So this is more at a frequency of leaks in the school, and before we create other issues with the school, we need to replace the roof.
Follow-up question, Mr. Chair. So the same issue occurs with, I think with St. Christopher? It's the same, it's ten years that you're getting out of a twenty-year school. So how do we ensure that the job is done right in the first time, when it's, it's twenty years, it should be eighteen years at least you should get out of it? But half the time it's not acceptable?
We hire consultants to do the inspections on it, but yeah, sometimes things aren't caught and issues arise, so.
Trustee Agnew, uh, trustee, sorry, I was looking at trustee O'Brien, I said trustee Agnew, I'm getting a bit punchy. You shouldn't be, he's a handsome, he's a handsome specimen. Trustee O'Brien, did you have a question? Thank you.
So just to follow up, follow up on the same question to Superintendent Merrick. So what checks do we have in place? You said, did we get a consultant to do that? And if the consultant has not been performing consistently, as, as proved in two schools, so what kind of guarantee do we have on the consultant job? Maybe we should change the consultant?
Yeah, so I'm not sure we used back in two thousand and eight, I wasn't around back then. The ones we use now, we do vet them and we tender them competitively, so we're confident in the ones we're using now, so I can attest to that. We do have warranty on the, but it's not a twenty-year warranty on the product, so it's only for, usually about a five-year period we have service work included, so.
So we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien, in favor. Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Charnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Motion passes. I'll read the second motion. Be resolved that the Hilton Catholic District School Board authorize staff to expense funds from available capital funding and the capital reserve for the proposed twenty-twenty facility renewal programs. And that, then that, the expenditures will not exceed six million and sixty thousand dollars. Can I have a mover for this item? Trustee Agnew and trustee O'Brien, the second. Discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Charnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to staff reports. We have about ten minutes till our next vote. Director Daley, do you have enough time?
That's up to trustees. So the, the report that I've got for you, trustees would remember that back in the early summer, a proposal was made by the city of Burlington and Burlington Transit to try and put together a plan to offer free transportation on Burlington Transit for secondary school students. So since then, the Burlington City Council's passed a motion to direct the mayor and the director of transit to, to proceed with it. They have been in contact with both the Hilton Public Board and the two local French Boards to ask for their support as well. The timelines are really around towards the end of the year, because the city's trying to make it fit into their budget process. The goals are listed in, in the report. In terms of the cost to our board, it, it should be kind of a net zero. We currently do purchase bus passes from Burlington Transit for our students over the course of the year. Our contribution would be the, the same amount, understanding that a memorandum of understanding would have to be arrived at. So the motion that I'm gonna bring back to the next meeting is that we support the idea in principle, and that we continue to investigate and enter into possibly a memorandum of understanding with Burlington Transit.
Do we have any questions? Trustee Duarte, then trustee O'Brien.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I have several questions, in fact. I don't, didn't understand the whole concept that's, that you're presenting here. I would like to know if there is a plan to change transit routes to ensure that there is a bus service to the front of each school? Is there a plan to do that? Is the city willing to change the transit?
I don't think I could answer that on behalf of the city. The idea here is not to replace school buses with city buses. It's to complement the existing school transportation system and really directed more at students who don't qualify for busing.
So in order, follow up, Mr. Chair, so in order for this to happen, the city has to be ready to change the transit routes. Okay, so is the city committing to change that?
Uh, no, I don't, I think what the city's hoping, and Fred, you can jump in, or trustees are at the meeting, I think what the city's hoping is that by providing free transportation for students, it will encourage students to become transportation users. And it's really not connected to our HSTS transportation.
Trustee Agnew?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just, I was at the meeting, so just to shut, to sort of clarify what Sir Chair Daley is saying. And so this is not, these bus passes are not just for school time use either. They would be utilized by students off-school hours, again, with the hope of trying to encourage students to take the bus, parents are driving them less, so just to really try to get, you know, students utilizing the bus system. And so there's no plan for them to reroute anything at this point. It's simply to sort of say, hey, here's some passes for you, or we want to make transit free for the students to encourage them to use it. They're, you know, if they're not using it now, maybe cost is a barrier to that, and so that's the idea behind it. So it's not, it's not necessarily driven strictly for school attendance, if that's making sense.
I have several questions, Mr. Chair.
Can we go to trustee O'Brien first, and I'll come back to you?
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you answered a lot of them, I just have one more, Director Daley. So who do we buy bus passes for now?
So currently, we, we support students typically in financial need, that we feel that providing bus tickets or bus transportation could help increase attendance at school, may allow them to participate in extracurricular activities, because they have no other way of getting back and forth to school. It's really kind of based on a bit of a student success model. So each year, we ask our secondary schools, because they would know the students, to put forward names of students that might benefit from such a, a project, and then that, that's how we, that's how we distribute the passes.
Trustee Duarte?
My next question. Is the expectation that parents would send their children on the school bus to school? Say, what about kids in grade one to six of JK? Are they expecting those kids to go on the bus? And if so, are the parents being charged for the ticket? Are they supposed to pay, or are the parents going free along with the kids?
So this is something separate from, from school buses. So it would be students, students who, who don't qualify for busing is really the target audience, but I'm also led to understand that they're hoping to drop that free ride to students under twelve as well, which would match up with Metro Links and Go and that sort of thing, too. So I think it's a, the plan is it'll be a two-pronged approach, but the, the plan for our students, or at least the one presented to us in July, was specific to secondary students, who wouldn't normally, secondary students who don't take a yellow school bus to school. That's who's really geared towards, but it would be open to any student.
So the, the information provided, I don't think that information is complete in all respects. I have a lot more questions here, but it just doesn't make sense me asking those questions, because the answers are probably not on the table. For example, why should we continue paying the money, and they'll probably come back and tell us to pay some more money? We don't know how the city is gonna work. What is this going to do to the public, the ratepayers' taxes? Is it going up? Are we, are we impacted by that? And so have the ratepayers been consulted? So I just want to know, we have some more information on this before it comes to us for a decision.
So the, the information that I provided in the report is the summary of the information that I forwarded to trustees, that I received the package from the city of Burlington. I think some of those questions around ratepayers are, it's really directed more towards the city of Burlington as opposed to us. But what we're looking for next board meeting is really just the approval to proceed in terms of conversation. And we would bring it back to the board.
Go ahead, trustee Antomasi. Yes, you do.
You know, for the different schools. So there's no extra cost to us, HSDSB, and it's, it's already money that is given to us by the region.
Thank you for that input. We have two minutes left till we have to vote again, and I don't think, well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't assume we're not going to extend the vote. So do we have somebody who would like to move to extend the vote? No? Okay, so we have trustee O'Brien has moved, and trustee Guzzo is second, so we need a unanimous vote to continue. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Charnata?
Oh.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew, is a recorded vote, I'm just gonna, I gotta do my duty, go down the line. Trustee Agnew?
Pardon?
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
So we'll have to adjourn the meeting. I'll need a motion to adjourn. Well, first of all, Rosie, I would assume the people who are no longer here are not considered absent, is that correct?
I'm just gonna excuse student trustee Brammer.
Okay? And then I would need a motion to adjourn.
Can you just be that?
Okay, sorry, we'd have a motion to excuse student trustee Brammer, trustee Guzzo, trustee Charnata. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Agnew, trustee Charnata, all in favor? Motion passes. Sorry, trustee Antomasi, I forgot you.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay. Trustee Guzzo, could you lead us in closing prayer?
Can you join me in the sign of our faith, in the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit? Can you join me in Hail Mary? Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, blessed art thou among women, and blessed is through thy womb Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at their very death. Amen.
Thank you very much for everybody hanging there, and it was a long night.